Having reached the five o'clock hour, I'd like to convene the committee of the whole and ask for a roll call, please.
Jacobson, Finnucan.
Here.
Markort.
Here.
Snow.
Noriko.
Here.
Baker. Favor.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Five present.
Thank you. I have heard from Alderman Snow, who is under the weather. He may be joining us for the regular meeting, but he anticipated not being able to attend our five o'clock committee of the whole meeting. With that, let me turn to city manager for a couple introductions.
Thank you, and I'm going to ask our community development director, Ellen DeVita, to do the two introductions. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Good evening, community and fellow staff. Very pleased this evening to be able to introduce you to new staff members from community development filling positions that have been vacant for a while. So we're pleased to be back up to full staff. And both of them have jumped into things just running, as you see from tonight's agenda. We've got two items, one prepared by each of these fine people on our committee of the whole. First, I'm going to introduce to you Joellen Charlton. Joellen has been hired as our principal planner. She has over thirty years' experience in planning and zoning, community, and economic development. She was raised in central Illinois and grew up farming corn and beans and grains. So she knows the rural community as well as the suburban community. She's worked in the western suburbs most of her career, and we're really pleased to have her. She studied at Augustana, finished her degree at University of Illinois, and also has worked in the private sector. While she was raising her family, she worked for WBK. And she actually is the individual who did the review for the 3M project while she was working for WBK, which has allowed her to just jump in knowing our codes at a decent level of knowledge for just coming to the community. So thrilled to have her here, and I introduce you, Joellen Charlton.
Thank you. I am definitely looking forward to the opportunity to serve the elected officials of the city of DeKalb as well as the residents. As Ellen mentioned, I have jumped right in. I think I've only been here for about fifteen to twenty days. And I've had a lot of communication with both members of all of the staff and several local members and developers who are very interested in moving forward in your community, and I'm very excited to help them do that. So I look forward to working with all of you.
I'll just add, Joellen will oversee all of the planning and zoning, and then our economic development and long-range planners will report to her. And that'll free my time up to work more in the building department, oversee policy, work more on commissions. I'm serving on the CBB board. I'm manning the building board of appeals, landmarks commission, and I'll just be working more at that level. So I'm very proud to have Joellen here with us and glad you're with us. Thank you.
Very good.
Say hi to everybody. Very nice.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you. Lovely to talk to you.
Welcome.
So I'm also very pleased to be able to introduce you, Jason Mishnick. Jason is finishing his second degree here at NIU. He was raised in western Kane County and grew up in that area, in the tri-city area. He has a background in economics. His first degree was in economics. His second degree is a master's in public administration. He has studied economic development internationally. And he has also worked in sales and marketing in the tourism industry and has worked for the city of Geneva. And he's a son of a contractor. He understands the building permit process. He's worked in the trades himself for his father growing up. And very pleased to introduce Jason Mishnick to you.
Thank you. I just want to say how excited I am to continue to be a part of the community, this time from the other side. I've enjoyed my time here in DeKalb as a student at NIU. And I really look forward to being able to take a lot of the things I learned as a student in the MPA program and apply them and hopefully start bringing some more economic development here at DeKalb.
Very good.
Welcome, and thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. First on our committee of the whole, or next on our committee of the whole agenda, we have the request for proposal for a DeKalb-Sycamore transportation study bus shelter project. I'll turn to city engineer, John Laskowski, for this presentation. John?
Good evening, mayor and city council. This is the distribution of a construction or consulting engineering proposal. It's going to provide both design, construction, and right-of-way acquisition services for this project. There's going to be fourteen bus shelters going in throughout the community, the metropolitan planning area, which includes not only the city of DeKalb, but also DeKalb County and the city of Sycamore. So eight of these bus shelters are scheduled to be constructed in the city of DeKalb. There's going to be one in the city of Sycamore, and the remaining five are going to be in the DeKalb County. So these shelters, the purpose of the RFP is to provide a design and get the existing infrastructure up to the ADA requirements in order for people to easily access the bus shelters themselves. The locations were determined by both the technical advisory committee and the policy committee. The members of these committees made suggestions as to locations where they had heard from other people throughout the community that they are good locations. But in the end, we also utilized the data that we received from VAC. And VAC provided us with ridership data and the data where drivers saw that individuals were actually waiting for the bus. So we believe we have a really good handle on locations where these bus shelters are going to go. There's not going to be any expenditure associated with the distribution of this RFP right now. It's simply requesting the distribution of the proposal to qualified consulting engineering firms.
Are there questions of John at this point? Alderman Noriko.
John, I noticed in the backup material that a couple of the sites are dependent on negotiations, discussions with other entities like Kishawaki Hospital. At what point will, who will engage in those discussions? And at what point will you know that it's going to be either site A or site B?
Yeah. DSET staff has already spoken with some of the ownership of the properties that are in question. Some of them do need right-of-way to be acquired. So there's one bus shelter in particular near Aldi, in the parking lot over there. And we need to develop a plat in order to demonstrate to the owner what property we're requesting in order to construct that shelter. So typically, that's a three to six month process. We're trying to abbreviate as quickly as we can. So it is really dependent on probably the development of those plats to present to the owners. So I think the project schedule that I had prepared kind of outlined right-of-way acquisition taking into probably at the latest March of next year, but on the earliest potentially January. So it is something that can hinder the project, but we believe that an open dialogue and communication with the owner can expedite that.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or discussion? Okay. Well, look forward to seeing the response to the, well, to seeing the RFP completed.
Thank you.
Yep. Moving next to video gaming terminal discussion. I'll turn to Joellen Charlton.
I'm back so soon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. It's my understanding that the city has been evaluating video gaming and its evolution and impact on the city for about the last six months. Later on your regular agenda for tonight's meeting, there is a discussion and recommendation regarding the fees associated with video gaming. This discussion on the committee of the whole agenda is for the purposes to get feedback from the council as to whether we should limit the number of video gaming facilities within the community. So providing your packet is a discussion on how it's evolved within the city of DeKalb. Until recently, it was not dissimilar from most towns where certain liquor licenses were granted the ability to have the video gaming establishments. And in most cases, those were granted as an accessory to that business. So if you have a bar or some other thing where they would be granted the liquor license, then they were also afforded the opportunity to have video gaming accessory too. Last year, the city of DeKalb issued its first license for a facility where video gaming was added as a principal use of the business. In other words, people started coming in and asking for the liquor license with the sole intent to have video gaming be their principal use of the business. So that was in, I believe, March of last year. Since that time, three more of those type of uses where it's a principal use have come into the city, and three more licenses are also pending. So staff has every reason to believe that if it's left unregulated, that more of those similar types of businesses will be forthcoming. I have worked with business ventures in other towns, and they do admit that they operate completely different than what this was initially provided for. They like to locate in retail strip shopping centers with the intent to provide service to people throughout the day. And they like to target people who are out running errands, not necessarily people that would go to a bar and park and gamble for long periods of time. They want to capture that audience that's out running errands that would maybe run in for a few minutes or more to gamble. Because the state of Illinois limits these businesses to not having any more than five machines, these uses end up being very small, oftentimes about fifteen hundred or two thousand square feet in size. And these gaming establishments that are operating these types of businesses will tell you they would just as soon have three or four in the same shopping center. They have, in other towns, started coming in and asking for three or four liquor licenses in close proximity to each other. And that's based on the fact that the state only allows them to have five liquor, or five video gaming licenses per business. Staff is presenting this to the council with the intent to solicit your opinions and advice as to how to proceed with this particular type of video gaming, and that is where it operates as a principal use for the business. The report outlined a few options for your consideration. First, we can do nothing and just see if the market bears itself out, if the successful ones can stay and the market saturation occurs. Or there's a couple of other options that we've outlined. You could only allow video gaming as an accessory use to an existing or new business, much like they were originally intended for. If we chose that route, we still would potentially need to do a zoning code text amendment to define this use as a principal use and then exclude it specifically from the districts. Another option would be to regulate it in whatever districts you choose. Again, in the zoning ordinance, you could pick the zoning districts in which it should be allowed, and then also decide whether it should be a permitted or a special use. In either case, if it's permitted, you would also have the opportunity, if you choose, to attach some standards that we could use when evaluating applications. And those standards might be such things as to evaluate whether a certain distance requirement should be provided or that you would no longer allow more than one in any given shopping center. You could also accomplish that by creating it as a special use, and that would give you a little bit more authority. And more importantly, it gives the public an opportunity to comment on that use. They would receive notice of a public hearing. The public hearing would be held by the planning and zoning commission, who would make a recommendation, and that recommendation would come to you for consideration and a final vote on that case. All of these are viable options, and at this point, we're really just looking for some feedback from the council. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Mayor, if I could just comment before opening up to the council? We're bringing this to you tonight because I know we have had at least two aldermen that have raised the question as far as wanting to have this discussion. I know early on Alderman Favor had raised this issue. And during the budget process in one of the joint city council finance advisory committee meeting, I know Alderman Snow also raised the issue. So we're bringing this to you because we took the cue from your previous discussions that this might be an item that you might want to discuss and perhaps put some parameters on. And with that, we'll answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Noriko.
I have two questions, first of all. And I don't know if you can answer it, or I need to direct it to Chief Lowry. In the video gaming establishments that we already have, particularly those in which that's the principal use, have you seen any increased crime activity or calls for service or?
I think it's pretty clear that in those establishments that are strictly getting a liquor license for basically the sole purpose of having the gaming machines, there's very little call for service of any type there. The liquor licensees that have had problems in the past are the ones that still dominate the number or call volume for us.
So there doesn't appear to be any correlation between the video gaming and increased police activity?
No. But I can say this anecdotally. I do have a concern because although it may not relate directly to the establishment, oftentimes when someone returns home and they've depleted their entire paycheck in a video gaming parlor, we hear the repercussions of it, whether it be in a domestic disturbance or some type of other situation within the home. And those are hard to track. So I think, as I look at this, I believe that it's a matter that should come to council, that we should take seriously, and that there should be some type of logical approach to the number of gaming licenses we have, especially in light of what we want our city to look like.
My other question, does the state put any restriction on video gaming near a school, a daycare center, a healthcare facility, anything like that?
I will look to the attorney, but I believe only to the extent that it puts restrictions on the liquor licenses. Is that correct?
For our purposes, we'd be looking at crossover between liquor license and video gaming. So there would be the hundred-foot minimum setback from churches or schools or certain other types of institutions.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Jacobson.
I have several comments on the issue, but my first question that came up in the discussion thus far is how do you define between an accessory and principal use? I mean, if they have a liquor license, and we've gotten rid of, especially in the rest of our liquor code, a statement of receipts or any of those trying to define food or liquor sales, what, if they have a liquor license and they're selling alcohol, they are by definition a bar, whether they're actively selling a lot of alcohol or not. At what point does it become the principal use?
I guess I would have two answers for that. One is that the technical answer on how we would define a principal use, there have been a number of different approaches to that by different communities. And if that's the direction council goes, we would look at recommending language based on the best available options. The practical answer is, in terms of the applicants that come in, they very candidly separate themselves into different categories where they say, "Tell me the minimum standards required to get my five video gaming terminals, and I will meet those. If I have to have a liquor license, if I have to have a sandwich." So they do tend to separate out relatively neatly when you look at how they're configured and how they operate as far as how we would technically define that. If the council directs us to go down that route of defining principal versus accessory, we would look at trying to make an amalgamation of what they have in common, the similarities, and present that to you.
Again, as my personal comments on the issue, I think it's, this is a perfect example of the city intervening where it shouldn't. The free market will dictate what's profitable and what's not. Again, there's a lot of overhead in these places. There's a lot of build-out costs. They're filling empty leasing space right now. I mean, there's so many businesses out there, especially in our community, and so many retail corridors, both on Peace Road or 23 and downtown, that are empty space. When the space is empty, the landlords don't reinvest in their properties. They don't cause a safety hazard necessarily. Most of these principal uses, especially in our community that we've seen, are multi-owned locations, correct? I mean, there are companies that come in with twenty, thirty, forty of these things, at least in the regional area or in the state. And they're good tenants. They pay their rent. They don't cause issues. They put good build-out into the buildings. Again, if there was a hundred of them in DeKalb, eventually, a lot of them are going to have to start dying off. There's not enough people to keep paying into these machines. They're going to go somewhere, whether it's in our community, whether it's in Sycamore, whether they want to drive to the boat in Aurora. If you want to gamble, there's access out there. It's not up to the council to legislate those things. We don't have a restriction on how many bars we have in our community. We don't have a restriction on how many cigarette shops we have in our community. We don't have a restriction on a lot of the moral hazard items, because once you go down that road, it's a slippery slope. And again, this is where a lot of people are saying, "DeKalb is very business unfriendly. We have these regulations on things that most communities don't. And we keep trying to legislate the results we want." That's where the free market comes in. That's where these business owners have to decide whether or not it's profitable and whether they can run the business and whether it makes sense for them. I don't think it's up to the council for us to decide that for them if they're not causing a safety issue, apparently. And again, the people will decide, the business owners will decide, when we've had enough. Overall, if you look at the ones we have in the community, and I've driven by most of them, they're well-kept businesses, they're well-built out spaces, they're nice, quiet, law-abiding people. businesses, they're well-built out spaces, they're nice, quiet, law-abiding people. Why stop them from doing business in our community, especially when we're reaping three hundred thousand dollars almost in tax revenue that we never had? It's money for us, it's money that we can certainly use, and clearly, it's profitable for these business owners to start a business in DeKalb. I don't see why we try to stop that.
Other discussion. Alderman Faber?
So, I have a couple of comments. The first question is, so we've had other units, or other, we've had businesses come forward to city council, and I know there was a special use permit for Glidden Crossing, but is it primarily the liquor license is why we see these at council meetings going forward?
Yes, it's, the liquor license requires the city council approval. Glidden Crossings would have been an amendment to the underlying annexation agreement for that use.
Okay. And just the comment that we're reaping two hundred thousand dollars in revenue that we never would have received, I don't necessarily believe that. I think that's two hundred thousand dollars that was going to be spent somewhere else within our community that is now getting taken away from our community, or is, you know, somebody's not updating their home, they're not redoing floors, they're not buying new carpeting. So, there are consequences to gambling. If you go to Joliet, where I work, you go to Aurora, the riverboats have had impact in the communities. So, I agree with the chief that we ought to consider, you know, what it is we want DeKalb to look like, how much do we want to be inviting these businesses in, if we are going to allow the businesses. Clearly, they're profitable because we have several new ones that want to come to the area. So, maybe our fees are not high enough to, you know, that's one thing we've talked at a meeting about a month ago, is potentially raising our fees. The other thing we might consider is, unlike the lottery where the money was supposed to go to education, and I know the money goes into the general fund, but what if we dedicate that money to social services in the community so that it really has, you know, the impact getting back to potentially helping those that might be harmed by gambling that comes into our community? So, those are just things to think about.
Other thoughts or discussion questions? Alderman Fanouk.
I guess I'm going to say what Alderman Jacobson on this item, that I think the free market will take care of it in the long run. Now, that's not to say that we couldn't put a cap on how many of these we'd like to see across town, either by total number of machines or total number of units of operation. But, you know, I think we're at nineteen right now with three pending. You know, do we want to look, is twenty-five the right number? Would thirty be the right number? That's something that I couldn't determine without some added research. But I think, as Dave points out, that the free market will take care of a lot of these if we get overrun with them. And I think later tonight, we're going to be talking about the fees, so that I think that may have some impact on how many of these businesses do want to come to town.
Other thoughts, anyone wishes to talk? Alderman Norreco?
Before I conclusively make up my mind, I need to do some more thinking, driving around, looking at some of these places. I will say that one of the issues that struck me as I was, you know, reading the backup material, including the possible options, was a kind of a visual of a, you know, local strip mall with like four of these there. I'm not comfortable with that kind of image, whether that means, you know, saying okay to video gaming, but setting aside a restriction in, you know, for a particular site that there can be no more than X units per, you know, X hundreds of feet or whatever. That, at least, is one of my initial thoughts about this issue.
Alderman Jacobson.
It's my understanding that's addressed in state law, isn't it, that you can't operate, owner operate more than five on the same premises if you're part of the same ownership or control group, correct? I mean, if there were five individual tenants that came in that had no relationship to each other, I guess it's technically possible, but Joe Schmo couldn't walk in and open up five different shop, locations in the shopping mall and put them all in a row. The state prohibits that, correct?
Our understanding is that there are communities that have experienced that, where a commercial strip center is subdivided and units are platted individually, and they will have separate related entities, or a series LLC, for example, that owns Johnny's and Billy's and Bobby's and, you know, and locates them next to each other, maintains a physical separation between them, there's not an interior doorway between them, but they are operated essentially identically.
Again, in that case, that case, I can see where we'd want some control over it. It's, again, you don't want an entire shopping center, you wouldn't want to see big lots, thirty of them in a row, operating as a casino. That I can understand, that regulation. Again, if you're talking what the community looks like, that I can see. I can, I get that, I respect that, I understand that. So, you don't want people intentionally going around the system to take advantage of the law. And I would certainly, at the very least, support that.
Sure. I don't, I'm not a big gambler, so, you know, I can't figure out how to play the silly machine anyways. So, I tried once, and I don't know, my ten bucks went, and that's all I had.
It's like reverse ATM, right?
I know, I was like, man. And all I ever get is twenty bucks to gamble anyways.
James is a smart one.
When we were talking about, you know, the distance between places and things like that, you know, that gets kind of foggy in that way, too, because, you know, if you look down through downtown, you go Sullivan's, KJ's, you know, O'Leary's, I mean, they're all within so many feet of each other as you go. The reason that you don't so much notice and go, oh, there's a gambling place, is because it's an accessory use to it. You know, it's part of, you know, it's not, I mean, it says video gambling here on the sign, but it's not what you actually look at as you're going through town. I'm more of a free market person as well, but I think that we do need to figure out, and I don't know which way that is, figure out a way, you know, so many units per populations, you know, something, because, you know, I'd much rather have a proliferation of something else at the same time.
Right.
You know, it's, and it is replacing, I mean, somewhat, our sales tax dollars maybe going down, and our video gambling dollars going up a little bit. You know, it's one way or the other, a little bit there. So, you know, what are the people spending their money on? Once again, I would have to, you know, think about how we could generally limit it without being limiting to businesses' right to start a business and have a business, you know, and do that part.
Understood.
Okay. Other thoughts or discussion? Dave, we're on the video gaming terminal discussion. Alderman Faber?
Well, when we let the first one in, we pretty much opened the gate to the, or the doors to the barn door, and there probably will reach a saturation point, but until the community or some sort of statistics show what that is, I'm still, as I was in favor of the one that we had so much trouble getting done, in fact, I don't think it actually got done out there by schnucks, there are a lot of people that like to go to something like this, that they don't have any, maybe they don't have a driver's license, they want to walk. Maybe it's because they, or maybe they shouldn't be driving or don't want to drive to Aurora. So, there is a certain benefit, and right now, I still support the free market. And then, I think that when it reaches that saturation point, the market will tell us that it's there because nobody will be able to open and know they're going to make money.
Other input council members would like to give staff at this point?
I think, Mayor, if I can jump in at this point, I guess the question for the council, we've heard divergent views on this, is, number one, do you want a cap? Or do you want free market terrain? And number two, do you want some restrictions on the strip center analogy as far as the number that can go in? And we're just looking for direction, yes or no, and if there's any other parameter, but that seemed to be the focus of the discussion here.
Mayor?
So, is there?
Mayor?
Yes.
Ellen wants to comment.
I'm sorry, Ellen DeVita?
Is this on?
No, I can't hear you.
Thank you. I'm hearing some consensus on the free market element, but what I wish I could hear more discussion on is the principal use versus the accessory use question. I think that Alderman Marquard touched on that, but I'd like to hear your thoughts more. I think that the limit, limiting factor is more in the realm of these principal use gaming establishments, and I don't believe everyone's commented on that specific element.
Bill wants to talk.
Bill?
I don't know that it really matters whether it's a principal use or an auxiliary use. I think that, you know, overall, it's, the free market's going to determine what, how many the market here in DeKalb, how many machines it can support, whether there, you know, is an independent with five machines in a small location, or if it's going to be somewhere where it's an O'Leary's or Fatties, or one of the other places where they're there and people just play them occasionally, and it's not their main point of business, it's an additional income for that establishment. I don't know that it really matters.
I personally witnessed, and I think I was around when we finally broke what didn't make sense ever, and that was the first A license thirty, forty years ago, whatever it was. And then it went to four, and these licenses then were trading it in the gray market for a hundred and fifty thousand, and the city owned them. But they were still selling in the back room, legitimately or not. In many communities, Chicago, Rockford, it was ten thousand dollars for an A, and there weren't any limits. And when we finally made our, when Dean came forward with the rules that more closely mirrored, I think, the state in Chicago, there hasn't been this huge crazy trading of a license that really is owned by the city, I think. At least, that's the way I view it. And if we cap it, we limit it, then all we're doing is creating investors to come in and buy these things out, and it just, it wasn't pretty over all those years when the As were trading at such a high value because there was a limit, and there was no logic that there was a limit. That, I'm just making comments, I don't have the answers.
Alderman Faber?
So, I think the last time we were talking about this, I'm not sure which Alderman had mentioned that, you know, the city had approved bringing in the video gambling terminals because existing bar owners were saying they needed those, otherwise they were going to go out of business. So, I guess what transpired to where they were going to be an accessory to an existing bar, to where last year, they became open to a principal license to start a business solely on gambling?
I might be able to answer that question. I think it's an unintended consequence of the original statute, in my opinion. It's happening everywhere. You're, DeKalb is not unique for this to happen. Many of the bar owners made the same type of request, and, you know, "We're going to die, we're going to close unless you allow us to bring in this revenue and help us survive." In the community, in some of the communities that I've worked in, that first one, as one of you stated, wasn't allowed to come in, and they came through and said, "We need to do a text amendment before we can list this use." It's a different use. It's not a bar, it's nothing that's in our code. And like some technology businesses, every once in a while, there's a new business that comes up, and zoning codes aren't equipped to handle it. So, in those cases, they have done a text amendment, added it as a permitted or a special use to define it and regulate it in those districts. And what I can tell you is that when that happens, it's the bar owners that come to the meetings and say, "Please don't approve these, because that's going to take away what you so graciously gave me back then to allow me to survive." And that's, you know, that's competition, and we all understand that. But I know that's been a factor that's played out in a lot of other communities where it's been discussed upfront.
Alderman Jacobson?
I would be careful to say it's an unintended consequence. I would say it's more of an unintended opportunity, in the fact that a major player entered the market, especially in Illinois, Texas, and proved that there could be standalone locations. And the way they proved it was by targeting a very different crowd that would go to a bar.
Right.
Most of these standalones target soccer moms, they target senior citizens, they target neighborhoods based on their demographics that wouldn't typically want to go sit in a bar. Again, if you're a senior citizen, you don't want to go sit in Molly's necessarily and play during while the college kids are sitting there. So, I think, again, it's not necessarily, I think it's an outcropping of a different segment of the market, looking for a different experience, and that's why, again, the bar owners are targeting the bar crowd. There's other opportunity out there for operators to target a higher-income crowd, some of them are targeting lower-income crowds, which, again, that's their business plan. In doing so, again, they've opened up, or they've targeted a different sector of the market, and proven that sector of the market can indeed support these standalone non-accessory uses. Again, if I were considering to open one, I would certainly want two or three or four sides of revenue coming into a place to support the rent and the overhead and those things. Some of these places, again, the top one that we've seen in DeKalb County is the top one for my hometown in Arlington Heights, they, they don't concentrate on food, they don't serve any liquor, basically, a couple beers a day. They are focusing on the gambling revenue, and they've proven that the higher-end market specifically can support that market. So, if that's the case, and it's an outcropping of the business model that's targeting different people, again, I don't think that's a consequence. I think that that was something that the market showed as an opportunity to, again, target different business and open up a different situated market.
Do, I'm hearing city manager corps posts three specific areas that staff would like direction. One is limiting the number of video gaming licensing. Alderman Fanouk suggested a number twenty-five, thirty, a discreet number of such licenses. Do others agree with that approach? Would you like to see some language that provides for that? Alderman Faber?
How many do we have now?
Twenty-two, twenty-two existing and pending.
So, there's three pending, or is there more than three pending?
Three pending.
So... So if you put in, I mean, I, I mean, I'm fine with the twenty-two, maybe twenty-five is the right number, but there might be a pause of six months while we try to get some feedback from other communities somewhere to see if there's any unintended consequence that we're going to have to bear out as a community, like Alderman Marquard mentioned. There may be some, some problems that haven't been brought to my attention particularly, or us, that are happening in other communities that we should expect. And if, you know, if we don't cap it, there might end up being fifty, and are twenty-five of those going to end up being, not making money, and what are they going to do to stay in business? I, I don't know that we can sit here and arbitrarily come up with a number of, of, when it's a free market deciding, unless we really know why we should be limiting it. I mean, in the case of liquor, I can go anywhere across the country and pull into any gas station, and they sell beer by the can. So we've, we, we know how to limit things here in DeKalb. We don't allow things like that, of course, but when I say of course, it's just never been done here.
So Dave, I'm hearing you support considering, you'd like to have consideration for a limit, if that's twenty-two, twenty-five, but have language that provides that limit.
I, I don't think that we know why there should be a limit to it, but if you want to pause it at twenty-five for six months and then debate it in six months, that would be, I think that makes sense, but I didn't know we had twenty-two. Last I heard, we had eleven, I haven't been paying attention. I didn't know.
Or it could come back to us before six months if, if additional applications were received.
Yeah, or just, or just leave it open and see what happens, because we could always deny and call it that. Well, I don't know, Dean, if we don't have a limit and five more come in, and we want to pick three of the five, could we end up in a problem?
I think the more conservative approach, if you're contemplating a limit, would be establishing that and having it be higher than the number that are currently pending. So if you're contemplating, we want to have a six-month moratorium, we would say, "Here's our number, and we're not going above that for this period of time, and we'll reevaluate thereafter." That would certainly be a more conservative approach.
I would, okay, if you're asking what I would do, if you want to contemplate a limit and talk a six-month moratorium, no more than twenty-five within the next six months, we might want to slow it down, but I don't know why I'd agree to that, other than I just said I would. It's completely arbitrary, and I think everyone needs to understand that. It can't be a hard and fast rule, it's just a way to throttle things down while we make sure we're not making a mistake.
Alderman, favor.
But it sounds like Attorney Frieders was suggesting that if we're projecting twenty-five at this point, to actually set the six-month limit somewhat higher than that. Is that...
We're, we're at twenty-two right now, so I, I don't have a preference on what your number is.
Oh, okay.
I would say, give yourself room to accommodate those currently in the pipeline, at least.
Okay.
Well, three more...
I misunderstood, sorry.
For clarification, three more than the pending, is that defensible legally for you? If we got twenty-two with the three pending?
Yeah, you could stop at twenty-two if you wanted to. I mean, you don't have to establish it beyond that.
I'd rather hear from the rest of the council now that we're talking about something that I fundamentally don't think we need to do, but it might be the right thing to do.
Others, Alderman Jacobson?
Again, I don't know how you arbitrarily set a number. If you say twenty-five, and twenty-five are filled, and someone says, "Hey, I want to open up a, a good restaurant and bar on South Fourth Street," we're going to jump at that chance. I mean, why would we limit the opportunity of economic development in our community at this point? If somebody comes in, we build another shopping center, or we build another grocery store in the Northwest Corridor, if it's been talked about. Someone may want to locate there. Again, why would you limit a retail tenant that's going to help that project get off the ground? Any number is going to be arbitrary. Once, once you fill the number, you're always going to get one or two more opportunities that someone's going to want to do it, or an existing location's going to decide they want to do it, or there's going to be some turnover in an existing location, and now you're telling the new business owner coming in, "Sorry, everybody else got to do it, but you can't because you're magic number twenty-six, and that's too bad for you." Again, that, that's part of the community's dislike on how we do things. And that's why a lot of people say, "Well, again, why would I open a business again? If I'm number twenty-six, why would I even come to DeKalb and go through a special use process and have to jump through all the hoops when I could be opening Sycamore in thirty days?" I mean, that's, that's where we're losing business to Sycamore, we're losing business to our competitors because it is so difficult to do business here. This is the opportunity not to allow that happen in this sector.
Do we know, does Sycamore have a limit? Do we know anything about how they do?
They don't presently have a limit.
Do they presently have a lot? Do we know how many they have?
I do not, I'm sorry.
Alderman, favor.
At this point, setting a limit, a numerical limit, I agree, does seem arbitrary and artificial. So I wouldn't support that. I would support setting restrictions, as I said earlier, on the number within a specific geographic location, and also reviewing the situation overall in six months. Those are my two.
Mayor? Just to follow up on the comments that were, that were just provided, I think, setting a number for the reasons that both of the Aldermen stated, it doesn't do anything to regulate the distribution of those uses. You could end up with all twenty-six in one side of town, and, and that really probably would be a real unintended consequence. So I think picking, we could do some more work if you chose. We could ask, the staff has some great GIS capabilities here to show where our existing, map those out, show where our existing facilities are. We could maybe take a look at what some other communities have in terms of distribution, and certainly, the very easiest way to do it would be not to allow them in the same shopping center, and we could maybe even go one step further and start to look at distances, what, what kind of distance makes sense from that neighborhood, you know, to be able to accommodate a neighborhood that might want to have this facility close by to walk to, for example. So we, we can do that type of work if you choose, and in the meantime, I'll look to the administrative staff over there to, to follow up, but I don't know if you're looking for an answer tonight or not.
No, we, I mean, our goal was to follow up on the, the comments by several of the Aldermen in previous meetings, so if it pleases the council, we will come back with those options, additional information for your review. But keep in mind, then, there are these three requests that are pending that would be coming to you probably as early as the next meeting, after we get direction, and I mean, next meeting, July twenty-fifth, that's when we get direction as to where you want to go, whether you want to make any revisions to the video gaming fees that were discussed at the Joint City Council Finance Advisory Committee meetings. So we will come back and do additional research and present that to you at a later time.
The only thing I'd like to add to Anne Marie's comments is that all three of those pending licenses are listed on page three of your report, and you'll note that they're all in very close proximity to each other on Sycamore Road. So we're already kind of seeing that oversaturation in one particular area as a real possibility. And that will be coming forward to you.
Alderman Jacobson?
Again, that, that's what I was going to demonstrate, is the business owners want to be in highly trafficked retail areas. Nobody wants to open up south of eighty-eight out in the cornfields. I mean, it doesn't make any sense for a business plan. So even limiting them geographically would be very difficult to do. At this point, the only one I would be willing to support would be to try to draft some sort of amendment that would prevent them from occupying the same shopping center as principal uses. Again, if there's a principal use in a bar, or a principal use in other use, I, I think that should be up for consideration by the council. As principal uses to use them in the same shopping center, I don't think anyone wants that. So I would certainly support that. I realize the difficulty in that is going to be if it's, someone tries to replant it into several, one building into several different types of freestanding occupancy or co-adjoint occupancy. Obviously, there's going to have to be some legalese to prevent that, which is, I'm sure, going to be difficult to tinker with, but again, at this point, that's the only one I'm willing to support.
Other comments for staff? Okay. I think you've heard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Joe Allen.
And Mayor, can I make a suggestion in light of the time? And I know there are several people in tonight's audience who are here for this presentation on the location quotient employment statistics, but seeing that there are people already arriving for the city council meeting, I would suggest that we table the location quotient to the next meeting and ask that those people, if you could, come back to the presentation because otherwise, I think that's going to be a sizable discussion as well. So we would put that on the next committee of the hall, July twenty-fifth.
Okay. And I, I would just note that the backup material is attached to tonight's call, and the public individuals are welcome to go to the city website and peruse that content of that material before next meeting. So I would agree with that suggestion.
Well, I, I'd like to get it out of the way, I mean, how long will it take? There's people here for it.
This discussion just took probably about forty-plus minutes. I think that discussion could take equally that amount of time, depending on the number of questions that the council members have.
I would suggest deferring it to next meeting and giving it adequate time at that, at that point.
Looks like, looks like I'm the only objection, I'll just withdraw my concern.
Again, I would, I would ask if there's any member of the public here that would disagree with that. I mean, obviously, some people may have come out for it tonight. Public participation's next up, anyway. Is there any public outcry that we don't want to, that we would like to table that? Would anyone like to say anything on it tonight while they're here?
I'm not seeing that.
I would move to table it's next meeting.
Okay. It's been moved to table the location quotient employment stats to July twenty-fifth. Is there a second?
It's still moved.
Dean, table or postpone?
You clearly specified the meeting that it's going to, I don't think there's any concern with the nature of the motion.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving to public participation, then, do we have anyone registered to speak? Is anyone present this evening wishing to speak at this point in the committee of the hall? Pardon? Come, this is the committee of the hall.
That's part of the council.
Okay, thank you. Moving then to a motion to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by whom?
James.
Alderman Jacobson.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman, favor. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carry it. Okay, do we need a few minutes?
Yes.
Okay. We will reconvene, I'll give you a three-minute break.
Of course.
I told you, somebody else...
City Council and ask for a roll call, please.
Jacobson. Fanukin.
Here.
Markort.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Baker. Faver.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. I'll ask Officer Reyes to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask everyone to remain standing and I'd like to ask us to respect a moment of silence in respect for those involved in the recent Dallas tragedy. If you could join me in the moment of silence. Thank you. I would note that we lowered flags on city buildings to half-staff in solidarity with the Dallas Police Department in mourning the victims of gun violence in that city. I would also further note that gun violence is not an acceptable act of protest. So I appreciate your joining me in that moment of silence. Moving to approval of the agenda we have before us. The agenda, are there additions, deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Fanukin, seconded by Alderman Jacobson. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. We have before us as a proudly Decal feature this evening, the Share a Bag program. Tim Holdman will introduce that topic for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, members of the public. It's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Claire Cron, who is a member of the Citizens Environmental Commission. She's here tonight to tell us about a program to reduce plastic bags in our city. It's called Share a Bag, and I'll just ask Ms. Cron to describe the program.
Well, use the microphone, please.
It's Ms. Crone, by the way.
Crone.
It's actually a long O. Anyway, I'll kind of demonstrate how this works. We released this new project to the city of Decalb on Earth Day, April 22nd of this year. We've been looking into this for a while. We saw a prototype in Evanston. They, of course, are a bit more advanced in some of their rulings. They banned all plastic bags from big-box stores as of August of last year. So there was an incentive to get people to be very concerned about making sure that they brought reusable bags with them and that there were reusable bags available if they didn't have them while they were shopping. And so they started this share bin program. I became aware of it through my husband attending their Green Fest last year, and I thought this would be a great idea to bring to Decalb. We don't have a ban on plastic bags, but still, we do have an incredible amount of plastic bag waste in the country itself. It is reported that there are 100 billion plastic bags thrown away annually in our country. And each plastic bag can take up to 5,000 years to biodegrade. Even where we have a recyclable program, for instance, you can take your plastic bags to Jewel or to Schnucks and you can have them recycled. That kind of is a misnomer. You cannot really recycle a plastic bag. You can downcycle it. That means that perhaps you can make a park bench out of it, you can make flooring for your deck, but you can't make new plastic bags or plastic bottles when you're talking about plastic of any kind. So to suggest to people that we need to use less plastic bags, period, is very important. Number one, they're made of petroleum. We have the drilling for them and the pollution caused by them in the first place. Chemicals are used to produce them. And again, the biodegrading time is enormous. So here we have the bin. This is exactly, the bin is a corrugated plastic bin that was, is the one actually in use in Evanston. It was a reasonable price. We, they came in sets of three. We decided to do a pilot program of six of them. We had them set in a few strategic places. There's two at the Decalb Public Library. There's one at Laundry Lounge. We have one at the Barb Food Mart over at the middle school. There's one at the Decalb County Health Department and one at the Salvation Army. So I can give you kind of the results of the pilot. The idea is that someone who comes into any of these establishments, and we did a press release, there were actually a couple of them, and Michelle Gibson, who's a solid waste specialist, who was my partner in getting this program launched from the Decalb County Health Department. She put the little press release there in the first place that came out before we had the release, and then we had a full story in there when we did have the release. So people became aware and are ever more becoming aware that if they have a need and they want a bag, at any time, they are perfectly free to go into one of our bins. We established these in the first place. I did all the signage and stuff initially, and we loaded them with forty reusable bags to start with in every single location. These were originally donated by First National Bank and Hy-Vee, who just very generously gave us their bags. And the plan is, which has worked in Evanston, people take them when they need them, and when they have extras, they bring them back. In some of our locations, this has worked. This happens to be taken just this afternoon from the Decalb County Health Department. I just want to show you what's in here. A chicken bone. These have to be monitored just in case people put unusual things in. The reason I wanted to pull these out was to make the point that these are not the original bags we put in here. People have been actually taking and returning. In a couple of locations, the Barb Food Mart, the Salvation Army, I'm told, because I kind of do a checkup every month, how's it going, that people have taken them all and they just don't bring them back. So it depends on the location. I checked the Decalb Public Library a few days ago. There were three in there. We hope that they're never empty, but some of them are. Now, my plea and request for suggestions from any of you is how to actually get more of them. I've asked numbers of banks in various places. Schnucks, for instance, it's a corporation. You have to be a 501(c)(3). We're trying to figure out how to have another community organization be able to request them. There are many people that receive reusable bags in the mail and they join organizations. Heavens, I know it happens to me all the time. World Wildlife Fund sends them in the mail. But it's getting people to know about the program and take the effort to grab the ones they're throwing in their closets and getting them into these bins. I do want to tell you a historical, historical Decalb story and also the association of NIU on this project, Decalb and NIU didn't even know they were part of. When we purchased these, the advice of the man who had first put them together to eliminate the false floor that's about this far up, as well as the weight at the bottom for stability, was not a good idea. They were flimsy. They didn't hold in place. So for this first time, I had to get creative. So I'm also, I teach the genetics lab and I'm also a PhD candidate at the Biology Department at NIU at the moment, and I went to our department and I got some of our eight-inch-sized styrofoam boxes that we get our dry ice supplies in. And because I happen to live in a house that I moved into 11 years ago here on the south side of Decalb that had a number of original Decalb bricks from the streets lining their entire pavement, I took a styrofoam box, stuffed a brick in each one, glued it to the bottom, and then put a fake floor on the top. So these are truly very historical, original bins. I promised you that as we continue to grow in the program and we order more, I am not doing all this again, but these, of course, are special. And Michelle, who could not make it tonight though she wanted to, she's at a meeting in Chicago, said that she is planning to order more. It was originally funded through the county and her department, and she said she plans to order more bins and more, and more bags. But of course, donations are all the better. So if any of you have any ideas about where, who I could approach to get bags, there certainly are, you know, expos and things like that. People have extra bags. We're running low at the moment. So if you have ideas, Tim is our liaison with the Environmental Commission, and he'll be happy to bring the ideas to me.
Very good.
Do you have any questions?
Questions for Claire. Holdman, the ready.
So if I do have reusable bags, collecting dust in my front closet, all I have to do is just bring them to one of these and just...
Just drop it, drop it right in.
Great. I have the HR society, any number.
Excellent, excellent. And again, we're talking about raising consciousness here. People are very used to the shop, you hand them a plastic bag of something. We want to get them out of that habit. And I know how hard, they say that it takes anywhere from nine times to like 126 times of changing what you do to create a new habit. And I spent a few years with these bags in the back of my car, going all the way into a store, buying all my groceries and realizing they were still in the car. And I made myself, when there weren't people behind me, tell the person checking me out, "Just a minute," and I would run all the way back to the car and bring them because I had to train myself. You know, we're very used to habit. So it'll take a while, but this will do enormously good things for our environment.
Thank you, Claire.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Jacobson.
I know I have well over 100. Down the street, come get them, please.
Down, down the street?
217 Franklin. Anytime this weekend, come by, I have well over 100 of them.
217 Franklin.
Yes, ma'am.
I will be gone this weekend, but if I just knock on your door sometime?
I'm there every weekend. Send someone by on the weekend.
217. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Claire. And Tim, thank you. Moving to our next presentation, the Egyptian Theater Annual Presentation. Executive Director Alex Nieren.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Alex Nieren. I'm the Executive Director of the Historic Egyptian Theater in downtown Decalb, and I'm happy to be here tonight to give you our annual update and presentation on how things have gone over the past year. On behalf of the Egyptian Theater Board of Directors, staff, volunteers, patrons, and donors, I want to thank the city of Decalb and our community for their continued support of the Historic Egyptian Theater, which is owned and operated by PET, Preservation of the Egyptian Theater, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit charitable organization. Now, most have heard me say the following, but it is always worth repeating. The Egyptian Theater is one of only five places in Decalb listed on the National Registry of Historic Places. Of those, the theater is one of three that is open on a regular basis and generates significant traffic. The other two are the Elwood House and the Decalb Public Library. Our nonprofit has worked tirelessly since 1978 to maintain and operate this treasure in our community. It is one of only six Egyptian theaters left in the United States and the only one east of the Rocky Mountains. We talk about this being a jewel of our community, but is truly a jewel of our country. We know this because two weeks ago, we were honored to be host to the annual theater conclave for the Theater Historical Society of America. This was a huge honor and a privilege to be featured on their tour, which was based in Chicago this year. On June 30th, we welcomed over 125 historic theater enthusiasts from all over the U.S. and around the world for a tour of the Egyptian. Not only were they blown away with the Egyptian theater, but they were amazed at the hospitality we provided to them while here in Decalb. I want to thank the Mayor, Alderman Fanukin, and some of the city staff who were able to attend and help welcome them. We also had individuals from the Decalb Chamber, the Decalb County CVB, NIU, and the local media in attendance. Hopefully, you all saw the front page of the Daily Chronicle on Friday, July 1st, that featured the Egyptian theater and this tour with a headline, "One of a Kind." The brochure I handed out to all of you tonight is a brand-new print piece that we gave out to everyone on the tour and now have available throughout the community to showcase our one-of-a-kind jewel here in Decalb. We continue to be the most photographed location along the Lincoln Highway in the state of Illinois. We are also a location for those that participate in geocaching. And the new thing this week to add to our list is being a hotspot for Pokemon Go. Just as I came over here tonight, there was 20 people out wandering Second Street staring at their phones. Foot traffic is foot traffic, and it's good for us. So if you don't know what Pokemon Go is, just ask any friend of yours that does gaming or any kid out there, and they can explain it to you.
So you and I are the only ones in the room.
So while we continue to have some great successes, we do still have a small amount of staff with our limited operating budget. of staff with our limited operating budget. This past season, we were, however, able to add a part-time position, and this fall, we plan to add another part-time position. We currently have myself full-time as the Executive Director, a full-time custodian, a part-time box office manager, and a part-time venue technician. This fall, we're adding a part-time house manager. So currently, we have two full-time staff and two part-time staff, with a total annual budget for our organization of about $300,000. With a small amount of staff, we rely heavily on amazing volunteers to help keep the theater open and operating. In this past year, we had roughly 150 volunteers contribute thousands of hours of service. We are honored to have such dedicated volunteers of all ages, from our local high schools, Kishawaki College, NIU, and throughout the county. We continue to grow our fundraising efforts. In the past year, our Board of Directors formally created a development committee made up of board members and community members to help guide the fundraising efforts as we continue to grow. We participated once again in the DeKalb County Day of Giving through the DeKalb County Community Foundation, where we raised over twice what we did last year. We also moved our endowment fund to the community foundation and set up an agency fund with them for the Egyptian to help grow a rainy day emergency fund. Additionally, in this most recent season, we received well over $100,000 in in-kind services from local businesses. Lastly, we have some exciting additional fundraising announcements that we hope to be making later this summer. We've had a very busy year, and I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to tell you about some of the highlights of our programming. The bulk of our season runs from September through April with limited events in May and June, and then no events through the summer months. This is because, as most of you are aware, the theater does not have air conditioning and has not since it opened in 1929. In this past season, during the time that we were open, our numbers were up compared to the previous season, which was very exciting. This season, we hosted 156 events, up from 135 events last season, which was also a record. This is the most events that we have hosted in nearly two decades at the theater. We were host to 31 different community groups and organizations, bringing in over 30,000 patrons. Our reports through our box office show that tickets in this past season were purchased by patrons from 26 different states and 41 different counties in Illinois. Using the Arts and Economic Prosperity Calculator, from the National Organization Americans for the Arts, which is based on our population size, the economic impact of the Egyptian theater on our community in this past year is estimated at over $1.5 million. We had an increase in national touring acts who performed on our stage this past year. Some of those included Richard Marx, the Dean Martin and Jerry Lewis Tribute Show, the Buckingham's, Lightwire Theater, comedian Brian Regan, Gaelic Storm, parachute comedian Ralphie May, and country artist Mo Pitney. Over the past season, we hosted a number of weddings, alumni class reunion tours, graduations, memorial services, business meetings and presentations, multiple wedding proposals, and were featured in a TV commercial shoot for Kish Health System. We are happy that our partnership with NIU continues to grow. This past season, we were once again host to the annual athletics awards event, the Victors, multiple films with the NIU Art Museum, a film and event with NIU STEM Reads Program, March to Bourbon Street, and Opening Night Festival for Arti-Grau. We hosted theater classes while their building is under construction. We hosted graduation ceremonies for both the NIU School of Theater and Dance and the NIU School of Nursing, and we hosted an all-day workshop on the creative economy by the NIU Center for Governmental Studies, bringing in over 100 people from Illinois and Wisconsin. This summer marks the eighth year for our Live Lunch Music Series, located in the DeKalb Farmers Market, where we schedule 11 weeks of entertainment for free. We rely on the generosity of local musicians to donate their time and their talent for this summer music series that helps attract additional traffic to the market in downtown. The entire setup, scheduling, and marketing is all done by the theater, and all the equipment for the series is provided free of charge by the theater. Our mission is to share and protect the historical integrity of the theater as a regional art center for entertainment and community involvement. We fulfill our charitable mission through extremely reduced rental rates for nonprofits, our community grant program for nonprofits that need additional assistance in renting the theater, dozens, if not hundreds, of donated tickets to nonprofits and fundraisers every year, and offering the theater free of charge many times throughout the year. Some of the events and groups that we donated the theater for free over this past season include Corn Fest, the DeKalb Chamber Downtown DeKalb Events, Pooptacular, and Santa Comes to Town, the DeKalb Area Arts Council Art Summit and monthly meetings, Town Hall Meeting for Proudly DeKalb, leading up to the America's Best Communities competition, and the week-long DeKalb School District All District Art Show. We have continued partnering with local nonprofits to show documentaries and host panel discussions after the films, to talk about the issues locally. Some of the nonprofits we partnered with over the past season included the DeKalb County Community Gardens, the Friends of Jams, the NIU Muslim Student Association, and the Unitarian Universalist Church. We are very, very proud of the growing cultural, charitable, and economic impact the Egyptian theater is having on our community. The future holds even more potential, and we look forward to reaching that with the continued support of the City of DeKalb and this community. I encourage everyone to visit our website at egyptiantheater.org to learn more about the theater and what opportunities are available to get involved to support the theater. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex, for the report. Are there questions of Alex? Alderman Jacobson.
I promise I won't beat you up this year.
You're fine.
I did want to bring up, again, highlight the Pokemon Go location. I spoke to Allen about it after this afternoon. I was out there last night, and there had to be 200-plus people standing there, from maybe 8:00 until after midnight, I was out there. I think it is a huge opportunity, both for our downtown and specifically the businesses that border you and the theater itself. Again, I know you're looking for other fundraising opportunities. I think you have a massive opportunity with that location, to tell you the truth. And I'd love to help try to shepherd that and try to figure out some ways. Again, there were people out there last night that said, "Hey, I wish there was a charging station and Wi-Fi here. Hey, I wish somebody had some water out here." I mean, there were 200 to 300 people in that block, and hundreds all day. I mentioned to Allen today, we've been asking for two decades, "How do we bring college kids downtown?"
And Pokemon did it.
Someone else tried to call it. It's amazing. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ask any questions. The question is, how do we take best advantage of it? And I think you guys, especially because of your location, can benefit most because of it, and take advantage of it while it lasts.
Definitely, yeah, definitely.
Again, you're talking 200 to 300 of what other people might consider nerds. I was amongst them, so I feel I can say that.
Well, it's a wide variety. Like I said, just coming over here tonight, there was at least two dozen people sitting out right across from the theater, looking at their phones, but they were outside, they were walking around.
Again, it's kids, it's teenagers, it's college kids, it's adults with their kids. It may be an opportunity, especially on a weekend night, to open it up to some of these college kids, so they can see what the theater is about and have the opportunity if they're there. Again, when else are you gonna have 200 or 300 college kids standing at your front door saying, "Hey, where do we go?"
Yep, yep, I agree.
So, take advantage of it, please.
Alderman, Ray.
Okay. I will betray my ignorance, because there are so few nerds in the audience, I think. What is it?
I'll let Alderman Jacobson explain.
It is a phone-based application game that requires you to go out in the community and walk around to do things. And there are different, I mean, City Hall is a geo-location on the game that you can get different points for doing things. And again, you're talking, in two days, there were 300 million downloads of this game. They're expecting a billion by the end of the month.
Well, we're gonna have a tough time coping with a billion people.
A billion downloads, worldwide. I mean, it's a worldwide phenomenon right now. It's trending all over the world. And because of the city landmarks down there, most city landmarks are designated as stops on the route. The theater is one of them. The Van Buwer parking lot is one of them, and the bench down there, the 150th Anniversary Bench are all geo-locations. To have three stops literally standing in one place, again, a lot of people have to walk around and do stuff. To be able to be sedentary and still be able to get all the points for game, there's people out there like me that love that thought. And again, it attracts, because of that location, it attracts a massive amount of traffic. And again, I was out downtown till almost 1:00 in the morning last night. There were people walking around, everybody's talking, everybody's joking. It's a really weird phenomenon. I've never seen it before. It's all over campus. It's all over downtown. Again, these college kids, they're willingly coming to downtown. Let's give them something to do and show them what we have to offer while they're here.
And you can be the tour guide.
I'm there.
Alex, I want to compliment the theater board on this promotional piece, and I would encourage people to peruse it. There are some very interesting statistics and facts about the theater in this piece. Well done.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex.
Thanks. Have a great night.
Moving to the next item, I have two mayoral appointments this evening. The first is an appointment of Michael Lundgren to the Citizen Environmental Commission for the completion of a two-year term through June 30th of 2018. I would ask for a motion to approve that. Moved by Alderman Jacobson. Is there a second? I'm sorry? Seconded by Alderman-Fenukin. Thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Carry. And secondly, I have the appointment of Joe Mitchell to the DeKalb Public Library Board for the completion of a three-year term through June 30th, 2019.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman-Fenukin. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman-Markwart. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Carry. Thank you. Turning to public participation, I don't have anyone wishing to speak to items not on the agenda. I do have some registered, and I will turn to those as we move through those agenda items. Does anyone wish to address the council that hasn't registered? Okay. We will move forward then to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is before us, containing approval of City Council Meetings Committee of the Hall, June 13th, minutes of council meeting, June 13th, and accounts payable and payroll through July 11th, in the amount of $3,480,183.10. And Resolution 201684 approving the closure of a portion of Illinois Route 38 on October 20th for the Illinois, Northern Illinois University Homecoming Parade. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman-Nariko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman-Favor. Roll call.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fenukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman-Markwart. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman-Fenukin. Roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fenukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Moving to G1, Ordinance 201620, Amending Chapter 9, Establishment of Fees, Section 9.04, Ambulance Service Fees. And this is before us at first reading. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman-Fenukin. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman-Markwart. I'll turn to Finance Director Kathy Haley to introduce the discussion on this item.
Thank you. The City Council and the Finance Advisory Committee had three joint meetings during the month of May and June to discuss the FY 2016.5 proposed budget. During these discussions, two revenue items were brought up, one being the ambulance service fees. A motion was made during this joint meeting, and a vote was taken with a 13-to-1 roll call to increase these fees. The increase is based on an ambulance fee survey that is conducted annually by the Naperville Fire Department. They had over 100 different ambulance service providers, and the DeKalb Fire Department fees fell below the average. So the recommendation for this is to bring those fees up to the average of that survey. Based on fiscal year 2015 ambulance fee data, city staff estimates an increase in net revenue of just over $156,000. This gain, we're just showing this gain in net revenue very conservatively as a gain in fees for private insurance collections only. This fee increase will be applied to the general fund and assist the city in continuing to create a fiscally sound and sustainable government while still providing the high level of services and residents of DeKalb that they've been historically accustomed to. And I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Before turning to council discussion, I'd like to turn to Dwayne Brown, who's registered to speak to this item.
Dwayne Brown, fourth ward. Well, once again, the city has found something that they're a little bit lower on the ambulance carry rates than the surrounding communities. The last time, it was the water bill. So we got a water rate increase to use it for actually items related to water infrastructure. Now, they want to increase the carry rates, and put this on the already overburdened taxpayer, who it's, the only people that pay this are the people with insurance and the people who can't afford it. And it's biased, it's biased. This is one of those things, it's like the Sykes Report. They had that, I read that, they had that compared us to different communities with higher median income, with higher median house prices, and a larger manufacturing base. This is unaffordable by the community. We can't afford it. Just because we happen to be a little lower, the taxpayer needs some kind of break. We have, according to city data, 40.3% of the population of DeKalb is in the poverty level. Do you think we can afford that? You know, give the taxpayer a break. We sure haven't had it on the last budget. We're not getting it on this. You know, we're not getting anything. And, you know, I go out grassroots. I talk to the taxpayers. They want lower property taxes. They want lower sales taxes. They want lower taxes on their natural gas bills and water bills. We cannot afford this. This is just, this is just another tax unnecessary, and I hope the council disapproves this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Discussion comments from council members? Alderman-Favor?
I had a question on the self-pay line. Under the net revenue, there's the current pricing and the proposed pricing, but then there's the ambulance charges, current pricing, and then a proposed pricing, which is a significant increase. I'm just curious, what is in that proposed pricing column? Is that what would, based on historical service, we would, we could bill, but maybe we don't necessarily collect all that?
Exactly.
Okay.
So it's based on the 2015 historical data, and there's a soft bill concept that would be done, so...
And I did have a question. So again, looking at primarily the self-pay, I know the insurance, people that have insurance, we're gonna bill the insurance companies more, but I'm looking at the self-pays are probably people that either aren't able to get insurance or they're underinsured, and so they have to pay that out of their own pocket. And I think we had talked about, we work with people, and we try and work, is it, do we, how does that work? Do we just do a payment plan? Is there some fee forgiveness? Or how is that work?
I can look to Jeff, but I know what the fire chief has stated is, the soft billing is maybe, you know, one bill will go out, it doesn't get sent to collections. If someone wants to work with a payment plan, we would work with them, but we don't press that much further.
Sure. And I appreciate that. I don't, you know, I'm not wanting to take, you know, someone who can't afford it and then just add to their burden in life with bill collection and things. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Kathy for the presentation on the item. I assume you're ready for the question then, and that is to... And that is to receive and file the establishment of fees as presented in the backup material this evening. We have a motion before us. I'll ask for a roll call.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
No.
Fanoukun?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Sorry, Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Ordinance 2016-21, Amending Chapter 38, Intoxicating Liquors, Section 38.27, Gaming Devices. And this motion is before us at first reading to receive and file. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Fanoukun. I'll turn to Director Haley.
Thank you. This was the second revenue source that was discussed during those joint FY 2016.5 budget discussions between City Council and the Finance Advisory Committee. There was a motion made by the Chair of the Finance Committee to revise the video gaming fees so that the new application fee would go from $25 to $500. That's a one-time fee for new applicants only. And the per-machine fee would go from $25 to $250, and that is an annual fee per machine. It was voted upon and passed with a 12 to 0 to 1 vote by the committee and the City Council. This video gaming fee increase would be not a large source of revenue. If it's based just on the 79 current machines that we have, we would be bringing in another $17,775 additional dollars. We did have our comparable communities showing that we were pretty low in our fee structure, which is more, I think, the reasoning why this was brought up during the budget process. So, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kathy, in the backup material, the cover memo to this item indicates as of March of 2016, the city has 16 gaming establishments with 88 machines?
So that, I'm sorry, was a typo. It's 16 at that point in time, and it was 66 machines.
66.
It was all, that was my typo. Sorry.
That's fine. Thank you for that correction. The other question I had, the text that we have before us, 38.27, indicates the initial application fee shall be $500 per proposed video gaming terminal. The renewal fee shall be $250 per video gaming terminal. Is that the intent? I thought the intent was the $500 was a one-time per application.
Yes, that's how it is reflected now. So under the current city code, the initial application fee, the one time when you come in, is 25 per machine, and this would increase it to 500 per machine.
Per machine.
And that's a one-time fee. And then subsequent renewals would be 250 per year. And that would be per machine.
Per machine.
Yes, per machine.
Mayor, if I could add, I think probably the confusion is the word terminal. The word terminal describes the business and not necessarily per machine. Correct?
The, under the state act, an individual, if I'm sitting down and playing one machine, that is a video gaming terminal. So it is $500 or $250 per individual machine.
Okay. So it is per terminal or per machine?
Yes.
Okay. Other discussion? Alderman, Snow?
No, and we discussed this at the Finance Committee meeting. There was some discussion about nonprofits and whether they could be reduced, and I think that's kind of problematic, but there, and we discussed the fact that there is a difference between a nonprofit organization and a charitable organization. So I think most of these gambling establishments, a couple, few might be nonprofit, very few are charitable, but I know there's at least one out there that I believe contributes 100% of its proceeds to a charitable arm of their organization. So I'm just kind of throwing that out there. I think maybe that's something we might want to consider before we pass this on final reading. Is there a way to, you know, if an organization contributes 100% of the proceeds to a true charitable endeavor or arm of their organization, whether that could be a different fee? So I just want to throw that out there.
Other thoughts, discussion? Alderman Baker?
I'm not inclined to get involved with your suggestion only for the following reason. It would require us to have to investigate in great detail what the definition of their proceeds means. It's often a marketing ploy by every possible entrepreneurial-type business out there to donate a portion or all of the proceeds, but what's that definition? I've never seen it ever explained.
I don't know if it's practical or not.
And, you know, what if they donate, what if they run all their expenses, and the expenses run to be more than the so-called proceeds, then maybe they don't give anything? I mean, we're really getting involved in something that, because, you know, if we have money coming in, we definitely give money out that we're not obligated as a city to, to the different organizations in the community. So I, I'm a little bit concerned about, about how you, how you actually can make sure that your well-intentioned idea does anything like it's intended.
Alderman Baker?
Did, the 250, if I recall, there was quite a range of annual fees. Was this basically an average, the 250?
The highest was $1,000 that we saw, and it ranged from $25 up to $1,000.
And then I would be against Alderman Snow's suggestion for a carve-out for charitable. The, looking at the Illinois Gaming Report, other than the one business that started late in the year last year, the next lowest one with three gaming terminals made, their net taxable income was $14,000. They have three terminals. I don't think $750 is going to take a bite out of their income. There's, again, the net taxable income from the city of DeKalb last year was over $2.2 million that these games produced. So even $250 per machine is a drop in the bucket for what these machines are pulling in. Thank you.
Alderman Markwart?
I guess my memory was a little different. I thought we were debating about $500 per application. I didn't realize that it was $500 per machine. I thought we were going, you know, for the business application was, the initial business application was $500.
That's part of it.
Huh?
That is part of it.
But five, but per machine?
Per machine is 250 per machine, correct?
For the renewal, but the initial application is $500, the way it's written is $500 per machine.
Application.
So the initial application, so whoever the people, the luckies or whatever on there with five machines are going to pay, their initial application fee is $2,500.
Well, I would bet that all the companies that are already in, that have already got their fees in, wouldn't care if we charged $5,000 per machine, so...
No, it's just my recollection was that it was $500 for the thing.
What sycamore?
I don't know what sycamore is. I know that candidly, we've had applicants that have expressed great amusement and surprise that our fees are as low as they are. We've had applicants that have suggested that the city should look at increasing the application fees, which is probably the first time that's ever happened on any license of any form of any public body. But the current code contemplates 25 per machine, and the proposal, as it was brought forward, contemplated increasing that per-machine fee.
Alderman Baker?
I've had more than one of the owners of establishments that have these machines complain to me about the $1,000 fee that they had obviously misunderstood if we're at 250. And I said, careful what you wish for. Do you really want to shine the spotlight on your business or this industry? Because $1,000 doesn't sound like a lot to me if you're making good money. They never got back to me. They must have thought about it. So they must be really happy that we're not charging that $1,000, so, you know, I mean, 250 is too low. But if that's what it's going to be, that's what it's going to be. I mean, if I was in a business like that, I'd want it as high as possible to keep out the competition. Because once you're in, you're making money, you know, what's, what's the big deal?
So the language before us is to raise the application fee to $500 per machine, and the renewal to be 250 per machine on an annual basis?
It's just different than what the memo says, and from my recollection, from our joint meeting from before.
Okay.
And our goal is to address the consensus of the council, so if we do not accurately reflect the discussion, or if there's a different direction you want to go, please advise us.
Are there others that wish to see that language revised?
Which part?
The application fee.
What if they don't get, if they pay that fee and they don't get accepted for whatever reason, do they lose the fee?
Yeah, the application fees are typically non-refundable.
So the non-refundable 500 makes sense, because we have to go through background checks, et cetera, but another 500 per machine seems excessive if they fail on the application fee. I would think that the other 500 per machine ought to be once they're approved for their application. But I didn't read it, I confess. I don't know how you intended it to go.
It's written as an application fee. It is intended, I mean, theories on application fees have, one is obviously, our fees are very disparate from other communities, very low in comparison. Two is that some communities adopt the belief that the application fee should serve as kind of a minimum entry point to establish some level of financial viability for a business. And the third component would be, the city does invest resources from every city department in reviewing any application, and particularly when either video gaming or alcohol is involved, there's a significant amount of staff time that goes in from police, from fire, from community development, even, you know, from time to time from public works when we're looking at access and site control issues. So there is some interplay between the amount of staff time involved in the review and ensuring that that time is covered.
Well, but they could apply for either three or five machines or four?
Yes. The applicant could choose up to the limit of five.
Well, if they go five, that's $3,000. Why don't you just go, um...
Five times 500.
Plus the application fee.
I think the confusion...
So your application fee is 500 for one machine?
The application, I think the confusion is the application fee isn't for the business doing the video gaming. It's for the application of that machine. So if they have four, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they have four machines, it's $500 initially for each machine, and then it's another 250 annually after that.
That's correct. If I come in and want to open a VGT business, and I want to have three terminals, I would pay $1,500 as my application fee. If I'm approved, subsequent renewals would be 750 per year.
So if they want to add a fourth or a fifth machine, they just come back and pay another 500 per machine?
Yes.
How, is that a rubber stamp at that point?
We would look at how their initial license was approved and evaluate if it had to go back to council or not. Typically, when these are brought before council, we put language in the resolution that identifies the number of machines that they're getting. So that would probably be a full process coming back to council again for consideration.
And the council could say, we've limited everything, you're stuck with your three.
That's correct.
So we're kind of forcing them to ask for five instead of three when they come forward the first time.
There are many businesses that have come forward and requested a lesser number. It's based on their available space and their business model.
All part of the learning process. I'm, I'm fine.
Alderman Snow?
I was able to listen to a lot of the discussion at the Committee at the Hall before I came, and there was a lot of discussion about, you know, whether we had enough machines. This initial application fee would only apply to new machines, and I guess I'm of the opinion that I think we are kind of starting to get saturated. I realize we need to let the free market determine it, but I think there was talk about how can we limit the number of new machines coming to DeKalb? And I think, you know, maybe by a higher fee. So that's why I think 500 at a minimum probably should be the initial application fee. But I was in favor of a lower annual fee, and that's what we did when we discussed this at the Finance Committee. So I think, I think the higher initial application fee is one of the ways that we can maybe control the number of gaming parlors, because we don't want one on every street corner.
Alderman Favor?
So one way to make it fair for, like a charitable organization or a, you know, a membership group that has video gaming terminals is you could set the annual, the annual fee per machine based on their net taxable income, where they're just having their own membership in, they're going to have lower income. It's just going to be their, their membership in their group, and where it's, it's a business meant to make money in gambling, it's going to be higher. They're going to pay a higher fee. That, that would be a fair way of assessing a fee.
If the council is contemplating that, I think we'd have to do some significant research. The state act is drafted in a way to create a special state and local tax that are applicable to this. And I think it likely would be unlawful to create essentially what would amount to a new form of a sales tax on the VGT proceeds. If that's something council directs, we certainly can look at it, although I don't have a high degree of confidence that it would be possible. But we're happy to evaluate that further.
Well, it's just, instead of setting the fee at an arbitrary dollar amount, why, well, I guess if you set a percentage, I could see where you're considering that to be a tax, but, I mean...
But we're happy to research that and return back with a definite answer if that's something the council's interested in.
Okay. Am I hearing support for Alderman Markwart's position of having the application fee based on per establishment rather than per machine? I'm not, not hearing support for that change.
What dollar amount were you suggesting, Alderman Markwart? If it's just establishment number?
All I was saying was that back in June, it seemed to me, or May, back in May? Yeah. Whenever we had the meetings, back in May, boy, time flies. Back in May, that the discussion was $500 per application, and I guess I did not realize that by application it meant machine. So that's where I was thrown off, and I was just questioning that part of it.
I'm not hearing others' support or a majority support that change. I'd like to ask city attorney for a clarification. Alderman Jacobson has recused himself, removing himself from the dais on this issue. He's registered to speak on this issue as a participant?
The city code, Chapter 2, indicates that a member of City Council can recuse themselves and can participate in a meeting as a member of the public, representing their own private interests, to the extent that they follow the same rules as any other member of the public that would wish to speak under public participation.
Okay. Thank you. I turn to Alderman, Dave Jacobson then, to speak to this issue.
Again, we had this discussion in May, obviously, and speaking as a citizen, as a potential owner of a building, that there are tenants looking to do VGT, and I've recused myself from the vote purposely, just so there's no apparent or considered conflict of interest. I did want to mention, however, that we already have barriers to entry into this, into this market. Our liquor licensing was one of the highest on the sheet that we were presented. Again, to start a business, to come in and start a business, there are already fees that the city is charging. We're charging $8,500 for a Class A liquor license, or approximate in that range, for their first application. We're charging an annual licensing, an additional licensing fee to have the machines, are we not, right now? It's a supplemental certificate to be able to have machines on the premises?
There's the annual renewal fee for the machines, which is what's before council, the proposal to go to $250 per year?
Again, when you're looking at the people that are opening these places, there are different classes of people opening them. There's the small business operators that are in the non-corporate locations, and again, barriers to entry in my building in Elburn that I have a tenant coming in now, it's $1,000. It was $1,000... It was a thousand dollar fee for him to go get his liquor license and open up the place, and I think it's fifteen dollars annually per machine. If we're looking for people to come here and start business, again, these are local small business owners, and a lot of these locations, they're local nonprofits that are pulling in the revenue, we're already seeing the tax benefit. We're, now we're asking for a well above average liquor license, now we're asking for an annual fee, then we're asking for a per machine fee. Again, at some point, the barriers to entry for any business owner in any business are too high, and I appreciate that there's some, some moral outlook on this, that we should, we should clamp down on the industry. Again, in looking at the fees, especially for the nonprofits, when you're seeing some of them are making thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars, when you're, when you're talking three, four, five machines, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen hundred dollars, that's ten percent, that's three times what we're receiving in tax revenue for them. This is why people think DeKalb is business unfriendly, because of these discussions we're having. Every time an industry pops up, whether it was vape shops that are filling all sorts of locations right now, not in our city, because the barriers to entry are too high, whether it's now this gambling, every time a new industry pops up, we throw so many hurdles in that they open in all of our competing cities around us. Nobody wants to open businesses here because this is our attitude. And yet again, as soon as an industry starts making money, we say, how do we get more money out of it? I think it's a bad idea. Again, if you want to raise them up, I think fifty is a little low, I agree with you. I think five hundred per machine, again, a flat fee per location and, and a small fee per machine, as we do in any other amusement machines, that, that's how we regulate any other amusement machine in, in DeKalb. So do what you will, but again, when you're looking at barrier central for small business owners that are trying to fill our empty retail spaces in our community, to keep these buildings to a standard that we want in our community, vacant space and non-abilities for businesses to fill those spaces are going to create dead zones like we see with Big Lots, like we see with some of our other shopping centers that cannot get tenants right now.
Dave, you're at three and a half.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, further discussion from council? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call then.
No, what are we voting on? There's so many different choices, we're going to go as it's written then? Five hundred per machine?
Five hundred per machine, application fee, and two fifty per machine, annual renewal.
Okay, well, two fifty annual renewal is a lot less than a thousand that the industry thought was coming down the pipe, and that's why they're not talking to me. They're not, they're, they're real happy. Uh, you know, it's too low, but I'm happy if that's the way it is, I'm, it's fine.
Okay. Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Fenukin?
Yes.
Markwart?
No.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion, period. Moving to item G three, two thousand sixteen twenty-two, authorizing a special use permit for the conversion from a single-family detached dwelling to a two-family residence at three oh two South Third Street, and this is before us in first reading. I'll ask for a motion, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko, is there a second?
Second.
Second by, um, Alderman Favor? Thank you. I'll turn to Joellen Charlotte for comment.
Thank you, mayor, and members of the council. This case was presented to the Planning and Zoning Committee on June fifteenth. It requests approval of a special use for a two-family unit on the subject property, and the property is zoned RC one, or Residential Conservation District. This district was formed in the not-too-far past to protect and stabilize the area's single-family uses while still allowing the multiple uses that existing, existed within that district to continue as they had in the past. At the time the district was established, the city went through a pretty detailed process to designate whether the units that were already there were single-family or multiple units, and that was with the intent so that, like today, when we're trying to decide whether or not they would be allowed to continue, there was some documentation. This particular lot was established as a single-unit property back in the day. And again, one of the things that the district was intended to do was to promote homeownership of single-family units as opposed to the multiples and the rentals within the area, which were, were creating some issues. Today, when you look at the property, there are many visible characteristics that would identify it as, as a two-unit structure. There are two doors, two electric services, two gas meters. There is, however, only one service, water service, according to city records. Each of the two units in this particular structure has only one bedroom. One unit, according to the applicant, needs a lot of work and repairs and has not been used for approximately five to six years. There are no permits on record that, available that show when the structure was configured as a two-family, and that's part of the reason we designated it a single-family. We don't have evidence that shows when it was converted to a two-family, and therefore, when somebody comes back to request use of what they're claiming has always been a two-family, it has to be through a special use process. All structures adjoining the subject property to the east, west, and south are all single-family structures. Testimony that was provided during the hearing in support of the request focused on its existing condition as a two-unit structure, with some people testifying, testifying that it has been that way as long as they could remember, and that the current owner should not be penalized because they might not have followed a procedure back when this district was created. Testimony against the project focused on the intent of the district, people wanting to promote the single-family nature of the area and preserve that, that conservation that the rezoning intended. One owner who, who could not attend the meeting at that particular time sent correspondence to the city asking the Planning and Zoning Commission to entertain a motion to continue the hearing. She felt, she wanted to be there to provide testimony, and she felt that some of her neighboring residents would also like to have that opportunity. At the hearing, uh, there were five of the seven members of the Planning and Zoning Commission present. In response to the request to continue the hearing, there was a motion to continue, however, that motion did not pass by a vote of three to two. Ultimately, there was additional discussion and a motion to approve, as presented in the applicant's request, also did not pass by a, by a vote of three to two. The public hearing file contains responses from three owners. We send notice out to, to the residents within two hundred and fifty feet of the property, and we received, uh, responses that they did not support the proposal from three property owners surrounding. The applicant, on the other hand, provided a petition with the names of four individuals stating that they agree that the contract purchases to continue this use of the property is a duplex. Today, I just had a, another resident come in who was also provided some additional information. I believe he's in the audience and, and signed up to speak tonight, has some additional comments, also does not support the proposal as presented. The Plan Commission recommendation is consistent with staff's recommendation, primarily in order to preserve the character of this area as that rezoning had intended, and not to create a precedence for other people to promote future multiples where single-family units have been documented through that process when this district was established. As is common in your practice, an ordinance was prepared, it's before you tonight with the agenda materials, and it's prepared in the affirmative for your consideration. So if you choose to concur with the Plan Commission's recommendation, you should vote no on the motion that's on the floor to approve the attached ordinance. Uh, I'll leave it at that. If there's some discussion about wanting to consider other alternatives, we may want to discuss some options with you about coming back, tabling the issue and coming back with some additional information.
Okay. Thank you, Joellen, for that introduction. Before turning to council discussion on this matter, I'd like to turn to those registered to speak from the public, Mary Lou Hughes.
Thank you for taking the time to hear from me. I'm Mary Lou Hughes, I live at three oh five South Third Street, uh, in a house that was built in the late eighteen hundreds. My husband and I purchased the house seventeen years ago. We've worked hard, we spent a considerable amount of money to maintain and restore it to its historic character. We repaired our copper gutters rather than replace them with galvanized gutters. We've had, um, custom-made balances made so the windows all match. We work hard to landscape and paint and scrape. We replaced broken sidewalk in the public area. So we feel the current zoning and historic designations are there for a reason, to maintain the character of the neighborhood and to move it closer to its historic nature. Many of us in the area have relied on the zoning and historic designation when we decided to stay in Central DeKalb and maintain our Huntley, this historical district. The zoning rules and historic description have been in place for many years. No one can complain that it's a surprise, and no property owner can say they weren't aware of them. The property at three oh two South Third has been used as a single-family home for many years, so it's not like if you reject the zoning thing, you would require anyone to change anything that they've been doing. Before granting any variance, the applicant should be required to have some very good reasons to ignore the rules, to destroy the reasonable expectation of the homeowners, and to undermine the whole concept of zoning rules and historic designations. There should be a very good reason to allow one person to change the character of our neighborhood that affects all our neighbors. Nothing about the requested change comes close to being a very good reason. It's not enough to simply say, I want to change the rules. It would be a terrible precedent to say, let's just change the rules so somebody can make more money. I hope the council will give serious thought before making any decisions to change this special use, um, special use permit that would change the quiet charm of our single-family homes in this historic neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Turning next, John Beachy.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name's John Beachy. I've lived at four oh eight South Third since nineteen seventy-five, and just after I moved in, uh, the city decided to pave over the brick streets, so I was involved in trying to preserve the streets. In fact, with the help of city work, approval and help of city workers, I actually got out and relayed some bricks. And that landed me on the landmark commission, the initial landmark commission. But I'm back after, I haven't been in front of the city council for a long time, for many years, but I'm back to speak to the current issue. Among other things, the Huntley Park neighborhood persuaded the city to rezone to a more restrictive level and to create a local historic district. And it's the preservation of that historic district and the character of the neighborhood that concerns me. You may think I'm paranoid, but, uh, we've had a number of requests in the past for rezoning, a couple of successes. Early on, at five twenty-nine South Second, um, the owners of the property had let it deteriorate, and we, and evidence was presented that the highest and best use was to tear it down and put in a multiple unit. But fortunately, the city council did not approve it, and we found somebody to rehab the house, and now it's one of the really beautiful houses in the neighborhood. At three seventeen South Second, there's a large brick house. Again, the, uh, request was to rezone from multiple, to multiple family. It was denied, and it has remained a single-family home, one of the nicest single-family homes in the area. On the other hand, the city allowed the construction of two, two-unit buildings at five ten, five twelve South Second and five eighteen, five eighteen B South Second. They're very large structures for their lots, and frankly, it's hard to see how it fits into the character of the historic district. It is a unique area, uh, it's multiple usage because at one point it was zoned for apartment complexes. I would invite you to take a walking tour, if you haven't, come out on a Sunday evening, see all the people in the park, people sitting on the front porches that we still have. And, uh, so my plea is to, for you to do everything that you can to maintain the character of our neighborhood and preserve the historic nature of it. There is a bottom line here, we believe that in protecting the neighborhood, we're also protecting our, the property values of the existing properties, but most importantly, it's aesthetic and the quality of life that we hope we can preserve. If there are any questions I could answer, I'd be happy to do that, and thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Turning next, Jerry Walstrom.
Thank you, my name is Jerry Walstrom, I live at three eleven Ridge Drive in DeKalb. I am the agent involved in the selling and the purchasing of this particular property, so obviously, obviously I'm here in, as a, in favor of it. I guess, uh, I guess when the, when the hearing was held back a couple of weeks ago at the planning, at the planning, uh, meeting, I, I was kind of, I was kind of impressed that it went, it went so long. It was perhaps close to an hour in the discussion about this one small, somewhat insignificant kind of property. Uh, if you, if you do walk around that neighborhood, you will find that, that this property is probably almost unnoticed because of its, I would say, insignificance. It's a small, white, uh, one-story building that doesn't seem to fit in with the grandeur of some of the other properties. According to the current, current owners of that property, the Salaver family, and I think you might have that in the, in the file, this property has been used as a, as a two-unit ever since, I think it was nineteen sixty-nine, when they purchased this from a gentleman that many of us know named Dee Palmer. They've used it as a two, as a two-unit, uh, family, two, a two-family, uh, building ever since that time, and it, and it, it has never been changed that I'm aware of other than the adding of a, I think it's mentioned in the documents, a wall in one of the bedrooms, making it a sort of a pass-through bedroom, but the, the demising wall between the two units, as far as I could tell in looking at the property, uh, was, was there since that time, and I don't think it's ever been converted back to a single-family dwelling. Preserving and maintaining the, uh, the, the neighborhood, of course, is a very valid, a very valid concern. In this particular property, uh, this is, the way that it is now is the way that it was probably eight or nine years ago when the RC one zoning was established. So with the idea that the conservation zoning was meant to conserve the existing use of the properties that were there, it should have been conserved as a two-unit building. It was that at the time. The detailed investigation that was alluded to, to go into the, I guess, determination as to what those various properties were in that district, obviously fell short. It didn't determine the proper use for this property at the time. It mentioned in the back, in the, the backup material from the previous, uh, hearing that there were approximately seventy people at the time that came in to, let's say, question their, their change, and twenty-five of those were granted a change. In this particular case, the owners have stated that they really either never received this particular notice, or if they did receive it, uh, they didn't understand what it meant. Certainly, if you are a property owner and you receive a notice that says, oh, guess what, we're going to change the, uh, the use possibilities of your property from a two-unit down to a one, unless you come in and say something, you're probably going to come in and say something. It was mentioned at the hearing that, at the previous hearing, that perhaps it was a choice of these people not to come in. I certainly don't believe that was the particular case, so I think in this particular instance, it's a little bit unique in the fact that it isn't a single-family house that's coming and asking for a two-unit, it's actually a two-unit asking just to be maintained as a two-unit, probably with the result of being improved under new ownership. So thank you very much for that, and, um, again, I'd be happy to also answer any questions about the property.
Thank you, Jerry. I do have Judith Salaver registered, do you wish to speak?
I thank you, Mayor and Councilman and woman, for the opportunity to address you. I do want to just reiterate a little bit of what Jerry said, in that I am one of the owners, my husband is the other. He is a Parkinson patient, he is not here tonight, and the other two owners are his brother and wife. They are out of town. It is true that neither one of us were aware of getting any information in the mail about any zoning changes. We probably would have had a lawyer because we wouldn't have known what else to do if we were aware of that. It is true that we did purchase this property from Dee Palmer in 1969, 47 years ago, and we've had it rented most of that time, just how it goes with rental property. That is true. I did want you to know that, or I was reading today through your minutes on the agenda and the information from the last meeting, and I tried to wrap my head around it because I'm not used to this. I live, I'm rural, we own property, have owned property. This is our last piece to own, except a lot in Seaco Park. Lou's brother and his wife do own two duplexes in town and their own residence. This would be our last property. We're trying to downsize and make life simpler because of medical issues. When I looked at this information, I noticed that the prospective buyer was very clear in her statement about wanting to live in the dwelling, to keep it the same as it is, to maintain the historic value that was there. She wasn't looking to change major images. It is a small dwelling. You do have pictures, I saw them on the Internet, that you can see that it couldn't negatively, population-wise, affect the neighborhood, if that's a concern also. As I tried to wrap my head around why people were not for it, and that's their right, I understand that, that even through the planning commission, that one of the main reasons was that it would set a precedence for other situations like that. I just ask that you would be kind enough to consider each one individually if that happened. This one has been, in that unit, has maintained historic values, no big major changes, for 47 years. And so I just thank you for hearing me and hearing Jerry and for considering possibly okaying that special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Trudon. Discussion questions of council. Alderman Baker.
I'm going to try to recall this process, but I think that they went through most of the properties in Decalb. It took several years. I recall many properties where the kind of discussion that just happened, people came forward because they knew that this would happen to their property someday later, sometime later, someday down the road, and we told them that the reason that we were doing this was to try to preserve Decalb as a whole, and many properties, commercial and multifamily, didn't get any sort of special consideration, other than we gave it a lot of thought and debate. There are a lot of properties out there that are grandfathered in, and as soon as they change ownership, we wanted them to go back to single-family. That's why this whole process happened. I understand that you want to sell it, but I think that was the purpose, and it wasn't just something that I dreamed up. It was what the community wanted, and the council people that were especially passionate were the third and fourth wards going through and meeting with all the property owners and neighbors. And I'm hearing the overwhelming majority of the people talking right now that have come forward and from the discussions is that the neighborhood doesn't want any multifamily. I mean, being in the sixth ward, the neighborhood that I live in was zoned multifamily, and the neighbors all came forward, other than a couple of landlords that were renting their houses, and they actually downsized it to single-family. That was the trend for many years, to make multifamily throughout this community before they built the dorms back in the 60s, and that need for every little nook and cranny and garage and attic to be available for a student to live in is no longer here. Now, I understand that that's where it came from, but Alderman Snow, is this your ward? Okay, well, we always went to the alderman of that ward, who was the go-to person, to find out what the neighbors have lobbied you for and what your opinion is, and usually the council goes along with the alderman of that ward, and I'd like to hear what you have to say.
I'll offer my kind. I mean, this is kind of a tough situation. I mean, you want people to have property and continue using it the way they've always used it. But, you know, as I looked at the different aspects of this, I mean, was it misclassified eight, nine years ago? It seems like nobody really knows, but it is apparently clear that it's only been used as a single-family for the last five or six years. I am concerned that the neighborhood has mixed opinions. I mean, this is not a unanimous decision by the neighborhood, and I think I look at that, as to what do the neighbors think? I look at the residential conservation purpose, and the purpose of the RC-1 zoning was not to maintain value, but it was to maintain the primary and preserve the primary purpose of zoning of the neighborhood, and the primary zoning of the neighborhood was to conserve single-family homes. And as somebody that lives in that, near that neighborhood, I am concerned about that. So I, you know, although it's a hard decision, I guess I'm kind of leaning toward voting no, just because it has not been used as a single-family. It doesn't match in with what the purpose of the RC-1 zoning is, and there was mixed opinions by the neighbors.
Thank you. Alderman Jacobson.
I guess my base question on it would be, what is the need to classify it as two-family? Being that it's only two bedrooms, if the other unit is going to be owner-occupied, they have the right to rent out the other unit regardless, don't they? I mean, if I'm a single-family homeowner, I have the right to rent out a bedroom in my house.
It's a divided property, we were just explaining. It's set up for two units.
Again, by voting no on this, we essentially make the property uninhabitable. We make half the property untenable.
It has to be converted to a single-family home, which was the intention all along that the council and the community wanted when we went through this process that took many years, not just a couple of meetings to achieve.
I understand that, but assuming it's a very, very small property in an otherwise lower-value neighborhood compared to sales comparables, we basically, in voting no, would devalue this property. Nobody's going to convert it back to a single-family house. It's not worth it. There's no cost value to bring back a two-bedroom house there. I mean, we basically create a situation where the property owner's value is eradicated by the decision. You can't sell it because they can't rent the other unit, and it becomes a one-bedroom half-house. I mean, that's a difficult position to put somebody in. What happens, if I'm the homeowner and you tell me that, I'm pretty upset. I own my building, and now I can't use half of it effectively. Again, if I was a single-family homeowner, and again, this is now being considered a single-family home, I have the right to rent out a bedroom to a tenant if I'd like, so why wouldn't I in this situation? Because there's two entrances?
The city zoning code contemplates single-family detached and attached uses as different types of uses. The definition of single-family detached contemplates a structure that's intended and designed and configured for use and inhabitants by a single-family. So that this structure is, has been partially separately demolished. They have some separate utilities, they have some common utilities, but they have a demising wall. At some point, it was rendered a two-unit that would, if you chose to keep it essentially, I think, in the current condition and only live in part of it, as is what's going on now, or if you chose to make internal modifications and make it all a single-family unit, either of those options would be in full conformance with the single-family zoning. But I think keeping it with two separate demise units or restoring it to that, or building out the second unit and trying to have someone inhabit the second unit and have it be essentially two-family attached housing, duplex of some sort, that would be a violation of the single-family residential zoning.
Okay. Again, being that utilities are separate, I mean, I live in an eight-unit building. We have one water service in the building, so that's not uncommon. I mean, that doesn't necessarily decide what's a single-family or multifamily, especially with water. In terms of the property, does it have separate addresses? Has it had separate addresses? Do we have any information on that from the owner?
I'm sorry. Can we speak in the microphone, please?
She said 302 and 302A.
And are those certified by the post office? I mean, they have those in their log as two separate addresses. So I mean, clearly, this building has to pass their litmus test for two separate addresses. It's been used as a two-unit for its history, for at least the foreseeable past, probably beyond most of our times in Decalb. But again, we're talking about two single individual units, and the flip side of it is basically eradicating the house's value. In that situation, if I were the homeowner, I'd walk away from it, and we're going to have an abatement issue and all those other issues. I understand that it's a residential neighborhood. There are commercial buildings in it or adjacent to it that certainly break up the character of the neighborhood. I own one of them, so, I mean, I'm aware of this property intimately because I see it from my building every day. Again, being that it's been, it's been demolished, it's already there, and the flip side of it takes away all those rights, whether nine years ago, the proper process was figured out, or who was responsible. We don't know those things. I would tend to believe in grandfathering and believing in the property rights of the owner. If it's been that way, if there's no proof that it was demolished, and then clearly, at least for the last nine years, there isn't any proof of that, I would tend to allow them to use the unit as it's been and hope that rental income will allow the property, again, to be better maintained and fixed up and kept clean and all those things, especially if there's a buyer interested, willing to come in and buy a house in our community right now. I'd certainly tend to support that more often than not.
Alderman Snow.
Couple things. First, I think the evidence does show that it has been single-family for the last five or six years. I think there's clear evidence for at least that period of time. So usually, when you stop using something for its non-conforming use, you sort of lose that right. But what I really wanted to comment was whether it's owner-occupied or not, and to me, that's really immaterial, because owners can move out. In fact, I had a duplex built near me. In fact, the address was mentioned a little while ago, where the potential builder, owner of the lot, called everybody, promised that he would be one of the owners of the property, that he would move into one of the side of the duplex. The duplex was built, he never moved in, the duplex was condoed, and each side was sold off. So, you know, that doesn't hold much water to me, whether it's going to be owner-occupied or not, because people changed their minds for whatever reason. Maybe they had to change their mind, or a year or two down the road, it's, the owner moves out, now it's two different renters. So I was really wanting to say that whether it's owner-occupied or not is really immaterial to me.
Okay. Alderman Faber.
So first, I just wanted to say we're at first reading, so if this does pass, there's plenty of time to get input from the neighborhood and input from others, so that we can, again, make a more informed decision at the next meeting. But, so, I watched the zoning commission meeting today, and looking at it, this has historically been a duplex, and after all the process that went through, I believe Derek Highland had said that even after they, you know, after this process had gone through, they still allowed, they gave the variance, or whatever it's called, to other homeowners that came forward after everything had been wrapped up and was done. So we've kind of already set a precedent, and Joel, and if you could correct me on that, I don't know, I believe that's what I heard today in the meeting, is that after everything was done, they still had allowed a few homeowners that came forward after the process, and they granted them the duplex or the...
And Tony, this is referring to the 70 homeowners that were notified in the neighborhood some years ago.
I believe it was the 70 that came after the fact. There were some that were after the fact that came after the, because he said, I think it was like a multi-year process.
Joel Allen, do you...
Yeah, what I recall, and that was my very first day here, what I recall, the comments being was that that process itself was a multi-tiered process, where the city identified some, we notified people, we gave people an opportunity, we reached out again. So I think my recollection was, is that he was referring to the multiple opportunities that were provided to the owners to establish what that use was for that base time period. Whether there were any additional granted after that, I can't speak to.
Okay. And then the other, I mean, I fully support the intent of the RC-1 to preserve and not give any, if somebody moved into the neighborhood and said, "I want to take this new home, and I want to make it into a duplex," I completely agree with that was the purpose of this zoning. But again, a structure that's been sitting in Decalb for that long as a duplex to not allow it to go forward in its current state, I kind of agree that it should be allowed.
Alderman Baker.
Well, here's where I've been in town 40 years, and I've heard this debate for 40 years. There are so many illegally converted properties in this community, attics, basements, garages. I mean, I can, and every now and then, you'll see a Realtor sign go up and say three-unit. Well, it's in a single-family neighborhood. You know, how silly. You can't, you know, it's not really a non-conforming use or grandfathered use. There's no permit to have made it that way in the first place, you know? And there's probably another reason that we have to consider, that it's been single-family, is that, how many years ago was it that we established this crime-free housing? And that's when, if they were concerned about, you know, preserving it, they would have come in and registered the property, they would have had it inspected, and maybe, we don't even know, we're not hearing, it might be a fire trap. I don't know. I mean, there's absolutely no way that there aren't a lot of properties like this, and to not, and because this crime-free housing was established, and because at that point, that would have been a better argument, they would have registered it as a rental property. I mean, maybe I'm speaking out of turn. Is it registered? Are they paying every year to be a property that's included in our rental program?
Oh, but I don't have that information with me.
Okay. Well, if it does pass on first reading, it certainly would require that we have that, and if they haven't registered, then there are huge fines that can be levied. I would not, I mean, maybe those fines aren't going to be levied if it wasn't rented out, but, you know, in order to get registered, I'm sure there's a complicated process. You've got to bring the code in there, and I'll bet it'd be cheaper to convert back to a single-family home to continue this use. And you guys got to be concerned about life safety issues. There's a lot of dangerous properties in this community, and from what I'm hearing and what I'm, I think this, it just feels like it's one being slid under the radar, and they're trying to get you guys to play on the emotion here, and I don't agree with what's been presented tonight to even consider a yes.
Alderman Jacobson.
Again, I think that makes a whole bunch of assumptions.
Absolutely.
We have no idea why the other, I have empty rooms in one of my properties right now. Just because I don't have them rented doesn't change the occupancy of the building. I just think that that makes a whole bunch of assumptions that we have no business making at this point without information being given to us by staff or other parties. Separately, before the RC-1 district, what was the district that the building, what was the district classified prior to the RC-1 designation that was put out?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that question.
I believe it was single-family.
It was what?
I'll defer to Mr. Beechey, who redates me, but I believe it was single-family.
SFR one or two?
Can you speak in the microphone, please?
I believe that the rezoning and the creation of the Huntley Park Historic District occurred in 1982.
From what to what?
Again, the question was, what was the zoning previous?
Before that, it's a part of the original plot of Decalb. So it was historically single-family homes. In the, I believe in the nineteen fifties, the city council believed that the city was going to expand to the south. And so, a number of blocks in there were zoned multiple-family. And so, I think primarily in the nineteen fifties, perhaps early sixties, a number of apartment complexes were, were created in the area. So that's why you'll see the multiple use right now.
Again, the question is, when this building supposedly was converted, was it allowed for it to be a two-unit? If they did it by right then, and we've since changed the zoning definition nine years ago, can we prove we noticed them? Can we prove we served them with the notice that their zoning was changing?
Dave, sorry to interrupt, but we were told there's no permits. This was just done.
Again, sixty years ago, there may have been a permit. Who knows? We don't have permits from a year ago. So, again, if this legitimately has been this way for forty, fifty, sixty years, and predates all of us, again, without paperwork, without knowing whether or not they were even aware their zoning was changing, if I've had a property for sixty years, and it's always been a two-unit, and suddenly, five years after a change, I find out, hey, now my property is not allowed for this? I'm going to be pretty furious.
This is the first one in many, many years that has come forward.
And it's now up for sale. Again, it came up probably likely as part of the sale process. Is it allowed? Is this allowable? Can I continue to rent these units? Again, without understanding that information of why it's even being brought up, I think we're making a lot of assumptions. And to try to make a decision on those assumptions, I think is a bad, is bad practice.
Alderman Markwart. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I did. And then I was listening. So, I mean, this has come forward in the third ward several times, where I've had residents contact me with something similar, you know, because they have two services for part of their utilities and two for this. And it's been used as this, and they go, well, I sent in the paperwork, or I didn't have the paperwork. I don't remember getting the notice about the conservation thing. I remember getting the paperwork about the RC designation and looking at it and going, okay, it says, well, you're a single-family, okay. And I was a single-family. But, you know, it wasn't, you know, so, did people get it? Yeah, I think, but a lot of them did, and a lot of them didn't really pay attention to it a whole lot. But there is such a thing, I mean, a lot of these, part of these, okay, I'm trying to be, say this right. There's a property that I know of that, you know, a lot of the residents around will say that it's been used as a two, as a multifamily unit for many years, but that is designated with the RC as a single-family. And it has two electric meters, it has, you know, those type of things. But it hasn't been used as a, wasn't being used as a multi-unit at the time that the RC went into effect. So I think there are cases where there were misunderstandings, and people did not understand, and they were given multiple opportunities, and, you know, I, in those cases, to make the change. I just, I don't know which way we should go. I don't, I can't make up my mind which way to go on that. But I think that there are plenty of, there are plenty of properties, as Alderman Baker is saying, where, you know, there's unsafe units in buildings. You know, I used to live in some of those when I first came to DeKalb. But there are also places that are safe, or are being made safe again, that have an opportunity to be used as they were many years ago.
Alderman Finuchin.
Well, at this point, I'm not sure where I fall on the spectrum on this one. That's because I think we do need some more information in terms of, you know, has it been registered as a rental to begin with? And was it registered as a one or a two-unit? You know, we've been told that it hasn't been used as a two-unit for the last five years due to needed repairs. We're told in part of the narrative of the backup that it says it's single-family homes in three of the four directions yet, but another part of the backup indicates that one of the adjacent properties is a multifamily. And so there's some things that need to be clarified in the long run before I'd really want to come to a final vote on this.
So Bill, you're speaking to voting in favor of the affirmative motion that's before us to approve the special use as a two-unit.
Well, at this point, I'm saying I don't have enough information to make a decisive vote either way, because there's, there's too many unanswered questions.
Which would lead one to receive and file on first reading.
We could do it that way, yes.
And then on second reading, to be more informed and make a final decision at that point. Alderman Noriko.
Much like Alderman Faver, I listened to the June fifteenth zoning commission hearing, and Commissioner Castro had a comment which really struck me. He spoke to the need in making a decision to think long-term. And it's difficult in this situation because, you know, the individuals who have come forward in terms of the exception, there are, if not compelling, at least relatively strong reasons, you know, for it. And there are individuals who are aging and trying to get out of a situation. I mean, some amount of, pardon me, sympathy generated. However, I believe that our role on the council is to think of what is the greater good? What is best for the city? And so, while I reserve the right to make a final decision when this comes for a second reading, I am inclined, at this point, to vote no on the exception because I think it's important, you know, to preserve the character of the neighborhood. Again, I will reserve the right, you know, as additional information comes forward, to change my opinion. But I wanted to at least point out, as I said, what Commissioner Castro pointed out that I thought was very useful.
Thank you. Okay. Alderman Baker.
I threw out a bunch of assumptions because I thought maybe the selling agent or the seller would come forward and answer some questions. So I'm still going to assume it's not a registered rental property, and I'm still going to assume that it's been flying under the radar. And the only reason they're here is that the buyer wants to turn it into a rental property, which is today. And I'm going to go along with the alderman for that ward, who has the ear of the neighbors, and, and back Alderman Snow on this one with a no.
Other discussion? We then have before us a motion to, in the affirmative, as Joellen pointed out, to authorize the special use for conversion from a single-family to a two-family residence. So voting no on this would be against changing the, the use.
So the use has to be a single-family, because it's not...
The use would remain single-family by voting no on this. And it wouldn't come back to us at second reading. Is there further discussion? Alderman Markwart.
Part of what's at issue, too, is, in my mind, is we, as a people, we, we change how we use facilities and buildings all the time. You know, you can look at downtown, things change. You know, the Chamber Building used to be a bank at one time, and it used to be another thing at another time. And, you know, so we do change the way that we use things. And that's not always necessarily a bad thing for that change to come into play. So, just something to keep in mind, that just because something always, in somebody's mind was one thing, that doesn't mean that it always has to stay that way.
Alderman Jacobson.
As my parting thought, again, if the building has been used or was converted sixty years ago, this isn't changing the character of the neighborhood. It's been that way for sixty years. Whether someone used it in that way the last couple, I realize, has a designation, of course. But if I live in a building and I choose not to rent my, my units out, it doesn't change the fact that it's a multifamily building. And it does, it's not going to change the character, it's not going to change the exterior of the building. It's allowing them to use the building as it's been used effectively for sixty years. And there is other multifamily housing in that neighborhood. It's not going to be the only one on the block that's going to change how, or set a precedent. And I think to say it's a conversion, I think is incorrect. It's not a conversion. It's not that someone's coming in, taking a single-family, and asking to split it up. It was split up sixty years ago by previous owners. It's not a conversion. They're asking to be recognized as, under a grandfather clause, that the building indeed was, was, is, and has been a two-unit. So to classify it as a conversion, that may be the legalese that it must have under zoning, it really isn't a conversion. It's been that way. It's been that way for sixty years. So to now try to claim it's any, anything else, I think is unfair and a disservice. And looking at the long-term effects, again, if we devalue this property to the point where it doesn't make sense to someone to convert it back to a single-family, again, what happens when, when people stop cutting the lawn or paying the taxes? The city takes ownership of it, we tear it down, and we have an empty lot. Again, that's not what's good for the character of the neighborhood. We have a period home that's been there for sixty years that we're not going to change, other than a simple designation that was likely allowed at one point in its history when it was done. I don't think it's asking too much. And I certainly don't think it creates a precedent for other properties to go ahead and take a single-family and cut it up and make it a two-unit. So I think it's a one-off that's very specifically stated as a one-off, that it's been that way, they have proof it's been that way, and they're just asking to keep it the same way it's always been.
Mayor, the chief has some information to share with the council.
Chief.
Based on the question that came from Alderman Baker, I had staff check on its status. The rental property is not on a registered database for crime-free housing, therefore, it's non-compliant. We'll address that. And it's in our CAD, our computer-aided dispatch, as a single-family address.
Alderman Baker. Thank you for that, Chief.
That was going to be a question that I should have asked, and I thought of it. What does the city recognize? Because the post office cannot make an extra address without the city first recognizing it. So there's another question that I'm very curious about. But, you know, Alderman Markwart and Dave, you guys just built the exact argument that needs to be explained. If this was a commercial property, and it was vacant for two years or more nationally, you're back to square one, and you got to start over. You got to meet all the new codes, you got to bring everything up to today's rules. You just established the exact argument why this should be a no, because it's been empty for six or seven years. It has been flying under the radar, intentionally or not. This is exactly why we went through the whole town, ward by ward, house by house. These neighborhoods were walked by the aldermen. They checked every single house to make sure that if there was a reason to make an exception, it was made at that time. And if a few came forward later, I don't remember them en masse, and it wasn't something that we had to spend even this amount of time talking about. This is a property that absolutely has now been caught with their hand in the cookie jar. They've got a problem now legally because they've been renting it and non-conforming. It's been empty on one side, and that is the exact argument why you have to say no if you're going to be logical about it.
Thank you. Other discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call then.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Markwart?
Yes.
Snow?
No.
Noriko?
No.
Baker?
No.
Faver?
Yes.
Ray?
No.
For yes.
Motion, Karen.
So there was a tie, so it does not carry forward. That'd be essentially a no.
Okay. Alderman Finuchin.
Point of clarification, with the four-three vote by council, since it's not a tie, does the mayor not have a vote on this issue?
There were four.
A majority of aldermen voted in favor of the action, so four of the seven aldermen.
And his no made it a tie.
Made it a tie, so he's not eligible to vote. He can vote with the majority if he so chooses, correct?
No, he doesn't have to vote with the majority. He has the opportunity to vote, once there's four yeses.
Correct.
When a majority of aldermen vote in favor of any proposition, the mayor shall vote. It's what state statute reads, and that's also what city code reflects. So four aldermen voted in favor, that creates a requirement for the mayor to vote, which could be a vote either in favor of or a vote to tie the vote.
And it, being a tie vote, I'll declare the motion defeated. Moving, thank you, Joellen. Moving to Resolution two thousand sixteen eighty-five, authorizing a pool in a thirty-five-foot Greenwood, Greenway area easement in the Heritage Ridge Phase Three subdivision, and authorizing city staff to approve future accessory structure permits in the subdivision's Greenway area easement that otherwise comply with city ordinances. I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Faver. I'll turn to Joellen Charlton.
Thank you. I think this one hopefully might be a little easier. This, this subdivision was approved in nineteen ninety-five, and as part of that subdivision approval, it included a Greenway area easement on several of the properties located throughout the subdivision. I think there was a total of thirty-nine that included this easement area. Fifteen of those lots that are adjoining I-88 tollway have a thirty-five-foot Greenway easement at the south end of their properties adjoining the tollway. The easement language indicated on the plot, on the plat of subdivision regulates what you can and cannot build in that easement. And it provides that no structures shall be constructed in or upon that property. It goes on to say, "Without the consent of the city council of the city of DeKalb." It does also reference some homeowners' associations and some restrictive covenants. In our search of county records to determine whether there were any such covenants or was a homeowners' association, found that there wasn't anything that was in existence. So we're kind of back to the city council with the authority to otherwise approve structures in the easement. This, this hit my dust like the second day I was here. So we had this request, and engineering reviewed it. It was, it happened to get submitted with an actual plat of subdivision, so the easement language was clearly on it, which is clearly why the engineering department denied it. When the owner gave me a call, one of the first things that he noted was that there was a pool to his east, a shed to his west, a couple, sheds a couple of doors down. Clearly, people had been utilizing that thirty-five-foot Greenway easement in violation of this, of this easement, to construct things like pools and sheds and other structures. We took a look in the building department files, and for those properties that had permits for those various structures, most of them submitted their request on documents that weren't plats of survey. Plat of survey is a legal document that includes building lines, the actual principal building, setbacks, easement language is all included on that. Instead, what we saw a lot of in those permits were schematic drawings provided by the homeowners, showing a lot of those things, but obviously excluding that very important easement language. We also took a look to see whether there was anything related to those easements with regard to stormwater control or other factors, and we didn't find anything that would suggest those thirty-five-foot Greenway areas are needed to provide stormwater control. The best thing that we can guess is that that subdivision is part of the planned development process at that time. process at that time, may have been utilizing a provision in the code to meet their open space requirement in an easement, rather than putting it in a standalone outlot, which would have cost them a few lots perhaps. So that might be an example of why that's there, it might not. So we went through this process with this owner who's like, "I just want to put a pool in my backyard, just like my neighbor did." And I'm like, "Well, this is good because we can fix this. The easement language includes a provision that allows the council an opportunity to review it. I told him I would give you the history of permits that were issued and give you guys the decision to approve this, similar to some of the other properties." So the resolution that's been prepared does that. It also gives the opportunity for you to approve staff to be able to review these types of future permits, which might come before city staff for consideration, without coming back to you. So as long as we review it and it meets the provisions of the Unified Development Ordinance and any other codes that might be applicable, your approval of this resolution tonight would also grant staff that ability. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this point.
Questions of Joellen. Alderman Faver.
So this is kind of the opposite of what we just talked about. This is something that several people have gone ahead and developed, built sheds, built pools, and put them in, and now we're wanting to approve this because it's unfair to penalize one person when other people have nuts, potentially either sought permits or included the easement in their permitting process. When you say that they do meet the Unified Development Ordinance, is that including setback from the property line of the tollway and the fence and things like that?
Correct.
Okay. And as far as we can tell, there's nothing, like, in the future, there's not going to be like a fiber optic line that's buried underneath there, and they're going to come through and have to dig through these pools, and because we approve this, we'll be liable for that?
You know, part of, part of your consideration of the resolution that gives staff the ability would also give us the ability to look at those individual cases, should they arise and should we become aware of them, to say no. In this instance, this is reason to deny it.
And to your specific question, if there were any utilities, they would be located in a platted utility easement? This Greenway easement is, it doesn't have any other corresponding utilities that would, or easements that would conflict with it.
Yeah, I was just thinking, it was, you know, it might have been potentially to put in tree lines to block the tollway noise or something for the whole subdivision. I don't know.
Alderman Noriko.
How were the permits approved if the correct documentation, the plat survey, was not attached?
That's a good question. I think there's been, again, I'm fairly new, so I'm learning what has been required and what hasn't. It's not uncommon for towns to try and work with property owners. Sometimes a plat of survey can be a hard document to come across. So way back when, I can only imagine that somebody said, "I don't have one, I just want to put a pool in, other things are here, I'm going to comply with your code, why not?" And probably that passed muster at the time.
Okay.
Other questions, discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Yes.
Markwart.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion adjourned. Create a precedent. Okay. Moving next then to communications. Alderman Jacobson.
As we've stated earlier in the meeting, there's lots and lots of people walking around, both on campus and downtown, in our downtown central business district. Most of them, as much as the disclaimer at the beginning of the app tells you to be aware of your surroundings at all times, likely are not and are slightly impaired by their gameplay. Be mindful of that when you're driving down streets, as people often walk into streets and walk into places they shouldn't, as we've seen by news articles. And be safe out there. Got to catch them all.
Thank you. Alderman Fanukin.
Just want to add to something that the chief reported on radio this morning, just again, to remind residents to lock their cars in front of their residence, because there have been a number of cars that have been left unlocked, that have been opened up, and amounts of money have been taken. So I'd like to remind residents to do that. And also, it seems to have been in the last couple of weeks, and again, this is anecdotal, it's not statistical, but it seems there have been a number of accidents in and around town. Just would like to remind folks to drive a little more carefully.
Thank you. Alderman Markwart.
No report.
Alderman Snow.
No report.
Alderman Noriko.
No report.
Alderman Baker.
I'm going to jump in because I saw looks of confusion down there with Dave Jacobson, and this is for everyone. As far as the voting, this is, what happened tonight is, although not common, it's exactly the way politics were carefully adhered to maybe the first four, five, six years I was on the council many years ago. In other words, if you want to get something passed, you really need five votes. Because the mayor has that right to come in, and we used to call it the veto power, and we always crossed our fingers that the past mayors would not step in on a four-three and hold our breath. But we saw an example tonight where the mayor had the right to come in, and maybe we called it veto power, but when it's a four-three, you don't, it's not necessarily a done deal. So I guess I'm just encouraging everyone to communicate more between all the aldermen before a meeting. If you think you have four, keep working on the rest of them to get that fifth if you're trying to count votes.
Alderman Faver.
No report.
Okay. City manager.
I just want to bring up, as a member of the Kishawaki Kiwanis, that biking with Beansy is this weekend on Sunday, and I encourage the residents in DeKalb to be aware of all the bicyclists that are going to be out there, and encourage those that haven't registered to register to bike.
Thank you. City attorney.
I just wanted to briefly comment that the question on the vote that came up, I think what you saw there initially was some strong leadership from your city clerk and a very thorough understanding of the rules and when to call, the mayor's vote when not to, and a certainly accurate call there. We continue to work to ensure that there is absolute clarity among the council and the public on voting requirements for the city. At either your July 25 meeting or at one of the meetings in August, we're going to return and have some discussion about that on a topic that the city clerk and I will both be presenting to the council on, to get some clarification as to how you want your votes to be construed, based on some changes in Illinois law. But again, it's our goal to have absolute transparency on that, and we look forward to working with the council.
Thank you. City clerk.
Yes, I do.
Good.
I wanted to tell you about a cool experience that we had downtown on Saturday night. You've already heard a little bit about it, because it is Pokemon-related. But my husband and I were out for a date night at Topoluna Luna, and we were having a snack and a drink. And as can sometimes happen with parents of young children, nine o'clock hit, and we were pretty much ready to fall asleep. So we were heading out, and we happened upon a group gathering, who were talking and having fun, and we remembered that the Gaming Goat was releasing some lures for Pokemon in the area at nine o'clock. And we had just downloaded the app earlier in the day for our five-year-old, so we walked over, and we thought he'd be happy if we caught some for him. And we stood and we talked to some people, and, you know, soon there were 15 people, then there were 30 people, and then there were 50 people. Everyone was laughing, all ages were there. And it was just a really fun, really great time. And I guess what I'd like to say for people who are unconvinced that events like this can have a direct and positive economic impact on the downtown area, we were headed home, and instead, we went back to Topoluna. We caught a second wind with all the energy and excitement. We had a late dinner and ended up staying out a little bit longer. So I'd also like to say that the Gaming Goat, the owner and the employees, really have to be commended for beautifully blending a community happening with really just savvy marketing for their business. I was able to go in and charge up my phone. They were handing out waters with the Gaming Goat logo on it. And there were a bunch of people that went in then to play board games that they have that you can pull off the shelf. It's their gaming library. So I familiarized with myself with a new business, and I just think this was a really neat experience. And I know this will be an ongoing conversation with many considerations for how this will impact the community, but that's just one perspective. So, thank you.
Welcome to Nerd Nation. Chief Lowry.
I just wanted to take a moment, council and community and staff, to, again, first thank the community for the support in light of the five police officers that were murdered in Dallas and the seven others that were wounded. I'd also like to comment on how the community has stepped up to support. Dee Coover's actually here and invited police officers to the library for a cup of coffee. The community's been very kind. We're going to go through a very tough time in law enforcement in the months and years ahead, and it's a time where the police haven't seen a lot of support for a variety of reasons. But we're looking to continue to establish that relationship with our community. We do appreciate the fact that there is support, but we also want to remind everyone that every one of those police officers that lost their lives were husbands, fathers, sons. And it strikes a lot closer to home. But again, thank you for acknowledging it with a moment of silence, and thanks to the community.
Director Haley.
Just one thing, we do have a finance advisory committee meeting tomorrow night at 5:30 here in the city council chambers. The agenda is posted on our website for anyone interested in reviewing it.
Thank you. I'd like to commend and thank the city manager and director Haley for preparation for that finance advisory committee meeting. I would encourage you to look at the backup material that that committee will be considering. Deputy chief. McMaster.
We had a good happening in the city this past week. We had a, your DeKalb firefighters are on duty and off duty, out doing good things in the community every day. And this past week, we had a confirmed structure fire with a person trapped. And an off-duty firefighter was in the area who tried to attempt to rescue. Because of the heavy heat and smoke, he was unable to effect that rescue. And a second attempt was made with the assistance of a police officer. They tried to effect that rescue, and it was unsuccessful. However, that off-duty DeKalb firefighter was able to tell when the other firefighters got on scene where exactly the citizen was and how to rescue him. The guys went up, put out the fire, affected the rescue, and the citizen survived. So it's just a testament to the good things that first responders do in the community, on duty and off duty, and the testament to their turnout gear, their SCBA's that you provide, and fire trucks. So thank you.
Thank you. Director DeVita.
The building division is working pretty hard on delivering, helping Venture One deliver the 1650 MACOM 3M building. And we're on target to deliver it to them August 1st. I should say Venture One will deliver it. There may be a temporary C.O., but all the racking is in, and they're moving to start to stock and get the building ready. So that's moving along. I do want to announce that the Planning and Zoning Commission for this week has been canceled. It's been posted as such, but just to let folks know that it was canceled, there wasn't anything on the agenda for this week. And then finally, H.R. Green is officially here, and our sole building vendor provider, Don Plas, is working right now. And Rob Wirsza will be with us towards the end of the month as our full-time inspector and plan reviewer.
Thank you, Alman. Director Holdenam.
Happy to report that progress is continuing to be made in our downtown gas main replacement project by Nycor. The 100 block is completely restored. The 200 block is about 90% done, and work is continuing in the 300 block. I was downtown Friday night, and there's no impact. You can walk the sidewalks and in and out of each of the shops easily. So please visit downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to recess for executive session for discussion of personnel pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C1.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Markwart. I'll ask for a roll call.
Markwart.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Noriko.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Point of clarification, that's not listed on my agenda. Can that be added without doing so at the beginning of the meeting?
The agenda does list potential recess for executive session. It doesn't list a specific exemption applicable, provided that you cited at the time of making the motion, the attorney general has defined that that meets the minimum requirement to the Open Meetings Act.
Yes.
Fanukin.
Yes.
Ray.
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. We'll use the large counters.